Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the whole Board of Education and regular board meeting for Monday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. A call to order the meeting noting that we do have a quorum with all board members present. Dr. Hornak, if you would lead us in the pledge.
Okay, I'll do that. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board, the mission of Holt Public Schools, as I get adjusted here, is to innovate, educate, and inspire, empowering all students to make a positive impact in their communities. The vision of Holt Public Schools is empowering our learning community to make a positive impact on the world. President Perry, before we go too far, may I ask your permission to read an opening statement?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Education and members of the public. Throughout the pandemic, the health and safety of our learning community has remained our highest priority. In order for Holt Public to maintain transparency, maintain transparency and trust, I'd like to open this meeting by sharing some thoughts with you. Over the past eleven months, some of our decisions have been seen as too risky by some and too conservative by others. What I can tell you with confidence is that it's been very difficult to thread the needle on the decisions we've made and will make in the future. I am proud of the work our educators and our educational staff have accomplished so far. This has been hard. We are at our best when we are in front of and alongside of our students. We've been required to be extremely flexible and agile with our thinking. As you can imagine, this has been the most unique year in my career. Since the beginning of this pandemic, our faculty and staff have risen up to meet every challenge. With that said, what I plan to share next may excite some people in our learning community and frustrate others. In Holt Public, we value individuals and group diversity by recognizing that people learn in different ways and at different rates. We invite varied viewpoints in decision-making, and we recognize that all people can contribute to achieving our goals. We accomplish this by attempting to build and sustain human relationships by modeling trustworthy behaviors, respect, and openness. We have been and we will continue to follow the Holt Public Health metric to ensure we can keep our students and staff safe and healthy. We are still waiting to schedule our 1B category vaccines. While some in our organization have received or scheduled their vaccine with another trusted source, a large group of Holt Public employees are still waiting. With the health metric and access to the vaccine in mind, we are committed to providing our learning community a firm date when we will return to in-person instruction. In consultation and collaboration with our teachers and their association, I'm opening this meeting by sharing that we will continue to honor the Holt Public Health metric and prioritize and prioritize ensuring our staff receives the COVID-19 vaccine. In addition, barring a governmental shutdown, we are recommending a return to in-person instruction on March fifteenth for all grades PK through twelve for any family choosing to return. Remote instruction will continue for those families choosing to stay with remote learning. Building leaders will be reaching out with more detailed information soon. We understand that this date is later than many would prefer, and this announcement may be frustrating, but this gives us the best chance to ensure a safe, healthy start to in-person learning for our students and our employees. In an effort to allow families to complete our return to in-person instruction survey accurately, maintain trust, and allow our entire learning community to plan, it is important to note that regardless of where a child is learning from, Google Classroom will be our method of delivering instruction. In other words, if a child is learning from home, they will engage with their teacher using Google Classroom. Students choosing to return to school for in-person instruction will also be engaging with their teacher by using Google Classroom. This is the only way we can maintain an equitable and safe experience for our students and staff. We understand that this date may not be ideal for everyone. With that, as stated previously, barring a governmental school shutdown, we are recommending a return to in-person instruction on March fifteenth for all grades PK through twelve for any family choosing to return to in-person instruction. You will hear more about our recommendation during six point one on the agenda. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to share some thoughts, President Perry.
Thank you, Dr. Hornak. Board members, going back to the agenda, we have no changes or additions to the agenda, which will move to public comments. And for the public, this is the time, if anyone would like to address the board, you may do so. Keep in mind that we do have another public comment section later on, but that one is very limited to our return-to-learn plan. And remember, this is not a dialogue between yourself and the board, although we may follow up with you later on. There is a five-minute speaking time limitation. We ask that you not use any employees' names or student names, and if you would, state your name for the record. We'll begin with any of those that have signed up in advance, Ms. Bureau.
We have no advanced sign-ups, but Sally Hawk Harrison has her hand up.
Go ahead, Sally.
All right. I could not make my computer work during the committee of the whole meeting, so I was not able to hear the discussion for the naming of the Michael Smith Memorial Stadium. So I did not hear any of that discussion or any of that final how the policy reads for future people to name different things or come to the board and want to name different things. But I am in favor of naming it for Michael Smith Memorial Stadium being the stadium. And I wanted to talk a little bit about by how the policy is worded. This is opening up a can of worms, in my estimation, for the field, the football field, the track around the football field, the entryway, the walkway. Okay, let's go to the baseball fields, the softball fields, the tennis courts, the circle drive around the Holt High School. To name all these different things, does the policy cover all of those different things? And I know that you have been working on the policies, Mrs. Bureau, and I really appreciate all of that hard work. But that's my concern, is that by naming one thing for one person, does that open the can of worms, or does that set the policy for these things to be set? And then I did hear the last part of the committee of the whole meeting when you're talking about shots for teachers and setting up shot clinics. I am a nurse. I have run a shot clinic over the years of being a nurse. So I would be volunteering my time or willing to work if you need me to work at a shot clinic and give shots to our own teachers, which sounds like I want to be mean, but I really don't. I want to help if I can. That's all I have. Thank you very much. I love you guys.
Thank you, Sally.
Heather Peterson.
Hi, everyone. I'm Heather Peterson. I teach at the high school and live in Diamonddale, and I have three kids. One had attended Holton, two that attended recently. I just want to thank the administration's recommendation, and I know they've worked with several negotiating teams. I want to thank everyone involved for continuing to ask us our input, to ask the community's input, to ask teachers' input, and to really, I know you're all working very hard to listen to everybody and to look at all of the data and make good decisions. So I appreciate you. Just want you to know that. I appreciate that the administration's recommendation is to hold off until staff is vaccinated. I think that is just music to my ears to even hear that we're looking at that. So thank you. I hope the board supports that. And I just want everyone to know that this group is working really hard. I am on many committees with these people, and I'm a parent, I'm a teacher, I'm a community member, and I just want to thank all of you for how hard you're working. I'm excited to hear more about, I see we have a student here. I want to hear what they have to say, and lots of committee work going on with HEAT that I'm really excited about, looking at diversity and how we can do a better job in Holt, and I'm just proud to be a Holt RAM. So thank you for your work, and I hope the board supports the administration's decision. And I do want the whole community to know that all these negotiating teams, obviously, I'm a proud member of the HEA negotiating, I'm not a negotiator, but I'm a member, a union member, and I just feel like I want everyone to know that we are working to make it the best for students and to make it the best to be a safe environment for kids, and that I want to be with kids like everybody, but we want it to be safe. So I just want you to know that when these negotiations are happening, that unfortunately in the press, I think there's always this, well, those teachers don't want to go back. Oh, we want to, but we want to be safe. So thank you. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Mr. Bakken.
Good evening, friends. This is Ben Bakken. I'm a whole graduate, whole parent, and former whole board member myself. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you all for your efforts, in a lot of ways, very similar to some of the things Ms. Peterson said. Dr. Hornak, for you and Ms. Cotter and Mr. Nestle and Ms. Cosgrove, none of you chose this career path because you wanted to experience time away from kids. And Dr. Hornak, we all know about that, about you in terms of your love for all the students in Holt Public. One of the things that's always made me so proud of this district is the care and compassion we have for our staff. And if we want the best outcome for kids, we need to be able to attract and retain the best staff. And Holt needs to be a destination district and the employer of choice. And I feel that through this process, as hard as it's been and as challenging as it's been for all of you, I think that we've proven that in terms of the love that this district has and compassion has for the staff. I think when we go back to the fall and the decision the district and the board made at that time to be one of the earliest to say that we were going to start fully remote, it gave our staff additional time to prepare, to make their remote instruction the best that it could possibly be. And again, for all those staff that we have within the district, none of them chose that career path because this is how they wanted to go to work every day. So I think that this is arguably maybe one of the most difficult decisions that administrations or boards have been faced with. And I understand the frustration that exists with different families because every family is affected differently. But if you look at our district, in my opinion, relative to some others, I think that Holt's done a fantastic job in terms of the communication and engagement with everyone, the passion of this board, the passion of the administrators, wanting what's in the best interest of kids. Dr. Hornak, I've said it before, I wouldn't trade you for another superintendent in the entire state of Michigan. And I think we've proven that as an entire school district this year, just in terms of that care all the way around. I do agree with moving forward with a return to face-to-face instruction as soon as it's safe, and if that date is March fifteenth, then I'll have confidence that, as you've always done, you've done a tremendous amount of research and analysis and consideration that that's the right date for that. So this topic just being one that there are people on opposite ends of the opinion on this topic who feel so passionately, and that passion comes from their love of their own family and their own kids, and so I completely understand that. But you've navigated some very difficult decisions, and you'll have more to face, too, that this isn't ending now as you continue to move through this process. But with that, I just thank everybody for their service, all the members of the Board of Education here. It's been, I understand the role, but just in terms of everything that you guys are going through right now, you've done a fantastic job, and these are difficult decisions. I will say one decision that's in front of the board that I think is a much easier decision and is the right decision to make does have to do with commemoration of the football stadium for Mike Smith. I think that's absolutely the right call to make. I think that for those that were able to see the video that was submitted, I think it did a great job of explaining why this is a perfect time to recognize someone like Mike and the impact that he had for this district. Thank you to Coach Falk for his comments during the committee, the whole meeting, and all of his work. But I think that's the right thing to do. I do hope to see a motion tonight for that and hope that that passes. So I think that's something where there can be a lot of common ground within the district as a whole in terms of support of such a fabulous man. So with that, I'll turn it over to the next speaker, but I, again, appreciate all your service. And just know that for all the understandably frustrated voices that are out there, there are those among us who recognize what a fabulous job that you all are doing, and appreciate all of you very sincerely.
Thank you, Mr. Bakken.
Emma Hodges. Hello. I just want to first off, thank you guys for all the work that you guys have done and, most importantly, giving us the opportunity, whether we want to go back or not. I know as a senior, this has definitely been a very hard challenge through our learning and differences through opinions within this crazy world and decision to make to go back or not. But one question that I do have is if we are learning well online and then do choose to go back and return to face-to-face learning, and then we realize that that is more of a challenge, the way that it's going to be different than the online learning that we have been able to adapt to if we're already doing well, learning online, will it be an opportunity to potentially switch back, or are we committed to that decision even though it may end up hurting us educationally and hurting our grades?
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. Jessica and Steve, if you could address that in your back-to-learning plan discussion.
Amanda Evans.
Hi, I'm Amanda Evans. My son goes to the high school, and I'm just having a really hard time with his education. He's failing all his classes as men for the last two semesters. I'm not getting any help or anything with this. I really wanted my son to be able to go to school this year. What is your guys' plan with getting the kids back in school? It sounds like that they're going to be doing virtual school while they're in the school, too? Am I correct?
Ms. Evans, if you're looking for an answer, this is not a dialogue between the board, but if you stay with the board meeting, that will be addressed when we hear from, yeah.
Okay, because I'm really concerned about my son. He's a junior this year, and if he don't pass his classes, he's going to fail, and he's not going to be a senior next year. So where do our parents get the help for our kids?
We can address that as best we can in the Section Six of the agenda, and also you have the staff and administration you can call. Thank you, Ms. Evans.
That appears to be it. There are no other hands. I have one. Danita.
Hello again. I spoke last week as well. I just want to say, we already knew there was going to be slack from some people for the return-to-school date time. It is what it is. You guys have done a wonderful job. Parents, please just support your school district. Please understand that there are certain reasons, certain things are being done, and it's not maliciously to hurt anybody. My students are struggling as well, but they have to do what is right for the employees of the school district as well as the children of the school district. So please remember that when you guys hear these board meetings and you guys hear what is being said, we appreciate each and every one of you guys on the board and everybody in the school district. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Danita.
Mark Stiles.
This is his daughter, McKenna Stiles. I'm a senior at Holt right now. I just wanted to say thank you for everyone. I know this is obviously a really difficult time, but I appreciate all the work you're doing. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the class of 2021. It's been a really hard year, honestly. I was normally like an A student, B-plus student, and my grades last semester did not reflect who I normally am, and it's been really difficult. Luckily, with the college that I am attending, I still get the scholarships based on my GPA when I applied, which was before the first semester, but that's affecting a lot of students. Another thing is, I haven't even stepped foot in the school I'm supposed to be attending for my last two months. So I don't even know my way around my school, and I feel like that's just something that says a lot about the situation. And I haven't seen most of my classmates, and that's something that I really hope I'm able to do, even if it's six feet apart with a mask on. I'd like to round up, because I've been going to Holt since I was in kindergarten. Dr. Hornak was my principal at Horizon, and I would like to get the chance to be able to kind of wrap everything up.
Thank you, Ms. Stiles.
Okay, that appears to be it. There are no other hands.
With that, I will close public comments. And board members, we will move to the consent agenda. Before you, you have three different board meeting minutes and also dispersments that have been paid as well as gifts. Dr. Hornak, I don't know if you want to make any comments on the HEAT author form gift?
Thank you, President Perry. Yes, so we have the minutes as you described, but the real excitement falls at item four point five. And our HEAT team is the lead on a county-wide author, it's actually two-author event on March fourth. And we have districts from all across our county that have contributed over $6,000 to offset the cost of these two authors. And it's turning out to be just this fantastic, community-wide, county-wide event. And I'm really, really tickled to be associated with it, but I'm more, you know, the credit goes to our HEAT group for coordinating and building capacity with partner groups across our region. So, very good.
So when ready, I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda items.
Move that we accept the consent agenda as described in the minutes.
I'll second that.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? Spirit, if we could do a roll call vote on this.
Dalton.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Grobel.
Yes.
Pelgrim.
Yes.
Bureau, yes, and Mr. Perry?
Yes. Hey, motion passes. We'll move to Section Five of the agenda, reports. And first off, we have the 2021 bond update. I don't know if I hand this over to you, Dr. Hornak?
I would love to give a brief update, and then I will need someone to then take some action on 511. But before we do that, Board of Education, I'd like you to know that we have completed our cycle of bond-specific staffing, excuse me, building-specific staff engagements. So we have met with each building. It was an optional meeting, but it was well-attended in each building, and we were able to walk out the scope of the project and then some of the specific things that are, you know, anticipated for each building. And like I said, it was well-attended, good questions were asked, a feedback loop was also provided for people like me who tend to wake up the next morning with something on their mind, and that was an opportunity for people to submit some more feedback to our bond team. So all in all, we've concluded that portion, the next step is to start building capacity with our PTOs and our principal advisory committees as well as our service groups out in the community and anyone in between. So that will occur, assuming that you call for the election, which is 5.1.1. That work will start as early as tomorrow with a press release.
All right, we'll move to 511. This is the resolution that you have in your board packet.
How's that resolution made, Mr. Perry? Do we need to read the entire thing? And if so, where do we start? It's very long.
No, you don't have to read that whole entire thing.
I've read it. I mean, we read it out loud, that's all I meant.
Yeah. I think your resolution would be to ask that we call for the election of Tuesday, May fourth, 2021.
I will make that my resolution. I move that we call for an election regarding the bond proposal on Tuesday, May fourth, 2021.
First and second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think I might want to say a few words. I know to the public, it may sound kind of, I don't know, odd that we're asking for a bond proposal in the middle of all of the stuff that we're dealing with. But what we're really doing is, you know, just based on the way that school funding has been designed by the state and the voters, that we need to plan for the future, and we have some needs that we can't meet out of the general budget, including replacing a couple of schools and doing some major repairs on many of the others. So that's the reasoning behind this call. It's not something we do lightly, and we have spent, I think, at least a year working out the details and making sure that we're doing this in the most fiscally responsible way possible. So I just want the public to know that this is necessary and it should not be considered in the same realm as the other decisions that we make today.
I'd also echo Dr. Hallgren's comments, and it's actually well more than a year from, you know, when this first started in its infancy stage. The other thing I'd like to do is thank all those that have given their input, all those who have been part of, you know, the team, this board for all of its consideration. This was an all-in project, and hopefully the public will give us their answer on May fourth. This Bureau, if you could do a roll call, please.
Leonard?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Dalton?
Yes.
Halgrim?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Bureau, yes, and Perry?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. We'll move to the Student Representation Report. I know we have Ms. Tompkins with us. I'm not sure about Mr. Dance. So if Mr. Dance is not with us, Ms. Tompkins, you got the floor and give us your report.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give a report on a few things that I've been doing lately. So I've been doing a lot of collaboration with Mr. Willard. We really just want to find ways to interact with students, like get everything that has been going on out to them, all the information, and just be able to communicate with them. So we decided, since Google Classroom has been a big help during this remote learning on getting information to a lot of people in one setting, that we would create a Google Classroom for our back-to-school learning plan, and we did so. And last week, we held a Google Meet after school hours where we discussed with students what the back-to-school learning plan is going to look like, what things to expect. And we also held time where students would be able to ask questions, and we would answer them to the best of our ability with the information that we have at the moment. It was very successful. We had a lot of very good questions asked, and I did lots of follow-ups with students who I knew that attended the meeting. And after the meeting, opinions on going back to school changed significantly, and many feel more comfortable with returning to school with all the plans that are being made, and many students are now excited to go back. They're ready for the opportunity to have a little bit of the same back in this crazy time. And the just, the general outlook seems to be more positive about going back to school. And we decided to have another meeting tomorrow after school hours to discuss things that were talked about in this meeting. And we just hope that we can continue to inform the students as best as we can and just get information to them and just make things as smooth as possible for this return for everyone. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Dr. Hallgren, do we have anything at the school officials?
I did attend the meeting on Wednesday last week. The first half was dedicated to a legislative update from Jen Smith, who's our MASP. I'm not sure what she is lobbyist at the state, which was interesting, but ultimately frustrating because there was actually no movement in the legislature on any of the issues. So hopefully that'll work out. The rest of it was dedicated to discussions of opening schools and all the things that go along with that. I was a little, I was both heartened and a little disheartened. I was heartened that many of the school districts in the ISD had managed to be, get their vaccines, and, you know, obviously they were prioritized based on who was in person and who was remote. But it did seem like, I don't know what the blockage is, but it did seem like Holt had managed to fall to the very, very, very bottom of the list in terms of getting vaccinated in the return to learn. So I was a little disappointed in that. I know that Dr. Hornak and everyone else is pushing as hard as they can, and, you know, we work within the system that we, we have. I'm with Sally Hock Harrison. If somebody wants to start a vaccination clinic, we, you know, she can do the shots and I can observe it or something. I'm with her. I'll volunteer too. That's, I had to actually leave for another appointments. I didn't get to stay for the whole thing, but that's, that's, that's the basic upshot of that meeting.
Dr. Hallgren, Jennifer Smith is the Director of Government Affairs for MSAP.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hallgren. Next, Ms. Felton, an update on HEAT.
Sure. Well, February is Black History Month, so we're excited about that. We have lots going on in whole public schools for Black History Month. Join us for the first annual Hope Public School Black History Month Conscious Art Virtual Festival and Contest. It's open to all Hope Public School students TK through 12. Information is available on the hpsk12.net website. If you click on the HEAT logo and scroll all the way down where it lists the HEAT initiatives and updates, you'll find information there about how to submit artwork and more information about the festival. While you're there, if you look over a little bit, there's information about the Capital Region K-12 Virtual Assembly that Dr. Hornak mentioned earlier. That will be on March 4th. That's featuring bestselling authors Kwame Alexander and Nikki Grimes. That is free and it's open to the public. It is in March, but it's before our next board meeting, so that will be on March 4th. So those are two really exciting events going on right now in the district. February, in addition to being Black History Month, is also American Heart Month. February 1st was National Freedom Day. Also this month, we'll celebrate the Lunar New Year, President's Day, and World Day of Social Justice. Now, I'm pleased to introduce my HEAT guest for today, Mr. Chris Billingsley. Mr. Billingsley, tell us a little bit about your position in Hope Public Schools and what the many staff, students, parents, and community members in HEAT have been working on lately.
All right. Well, thank you, and thank you to the board. I appreciate that you guys allowed time for this to, to give dialogue. So I appreciate you all. So yes, my name is Christopher Billingsley, and my position here in the district is, actually is called Inclusion and Outreach Coordinator. So I'm actually blessed with having two jobs in one. So it's kind of two different things to do for the district. It's pretty unique. But here specifically today is to kind of talk about my, my coordination and leadership with, with HEAT itself. So I believe, as long as I have access to share my screen, I put together a little presentation for you guys because I know over the course of this year, you all have been exposed to different members of HEAT, different chairs. So, and I'm not sure if all of you, you know, truly know the different components of HEAT. So I just wanted to make sure and kind of share some things with you briefly, just to give you an overall synopsis of what he is and some things that we've done. So I am going to, let's see if I can, if I can share with you. All right, let's get this going. All right. So to kick us off, I am going to share a lyrical video with you in the, in the, in light of Black History Month and the message, all the equity work that we've been working on. I came across something that I really feel like speaks to the work that we're doing. So I encourage you to, to turn up your, your, your sound and just be ready to read a little bit. Follow along. All right. I appreciate you guys' attention to that. The message that I get every time I listen, every time I look at the message that's in there, the more work that we do with equity, when you know better, you do better. And we've learned a lot from martyrs that have been before us. We have to speak. We have to take action. The time to be quiet is no more. So we have work to do. So again, I told you I would share with you the, the systems of HEAT. So just in case that you're not fully aware, so what I've listed here is, we have the assistance, excuse me, Systems Analysis Group, and under that, you'll find work done on titles six and seven. You'll find work done in curriculum. Then we have student support, and under that, this, this group is really, no pun intended, really on fire. We have mentorship, behavior systems, and then organizing students. And this is where you've heard of the Authors Assembly. That's going to be coming up soon. Just tons of work, tons of work. Next, staff support, and here, kind of going back to last month, from the recommendation from the parent group, this is involved with HR, hiring processes, and staff care, and then again, parent support group, and then community outreach. So I just wanted to give you a synopsis of the different groups that we have. Okay, so HEAT updates. You might ask, you know, where do I go to see and understand what's going on with HEAT? Well, you have, you have really two different avenues. One, of course, you can go to our district website here. And when you go to our district website, one of the, one of the components that I like to draw your attention to is going to our district website. It's going to take you here. And then in this padlet that we have right here, you will find all of those groups within HEAT. So parent support, and if you want to get any information on what we currently have going on this month with, regarding the Conscious Art Festival, that is, again, a phenomenal. I would very much encourage you guys to, when you get a chance, to click on this site, so you can see a lot of the work. Students are submitting works of art and various works of art. We're talking about print. Some might do spoken word, some might do dance, and at the end of the month, there will be judges who will, in that genre, will, will judge and choose winners for each building. So, and these are our students here in Hope Public. So very much encourage you to go there. But again, you can see the other categories, Systems Analysis Group, Student Group, Parent Group. So you can find updates as to what's going on in each group. So I highly recommend that you get a chance to check that out. So HEAT has been, even kind of backing out of HEAT a little bit, Hope Public connected with a group. We, we wanted to do some equity, wanted to find out what was going on with equity. You know, we wanted to know how can we improve Hope Public? So we connected with Great Lakes Equity Center, and if you're not familiar with what that is, this is a group, and, and, and I kind of gave you a basic definition. So Great Lakes Equity Center is really the hub that holds research, technical assistance, and resources and projects all around the concepts of equity. Now, getting a little bit more specific, we are also a part of one of their projects, and this is called the Midwest and Plains Equity Assistance Center. So it's within the Great Lakes Equity Center. And this is known, normally known as MAPS. So if, if ever you find one of the, the folks that are on the, on the MAP team or, or those working with Great Lakes Equity Center, we kind of use those, those two terms interchangeably. So it could be Great Lakes Equity Center, or we might just refer to it as MAP. So MAP, again, Midwest and Plains Equity Center. The MAP Center provides technical assistance and training around, or an array of genres, and, you know, this is to promote equitable, excuse me, equitable educational opportunities and, and, you know, work again in the area of civil rights, equity, and school reform. So the beauty of this is that this is a grant-funded program, so it's cost, it costs us nothing to get some great, I want to say, leadership. They share with us research and resources that they have already put together. So the nice thing is, is that they're not telling us what to do. They're giving us suggestions as to some tools to use and how to look at all of the data, all of the pieces that we have as a district to formulate what we need as a district. So they're not giving us recommendations from some other district that's done other work. This is the team that has met with MAP. We met, we did, we did some work three days so far, and each day was about an eight-hour, imagine an eight-hour Zoom call to where you're just, you're doing some heavy lifting. We were doing some serious work. So we still have a lot of work to do to finish up the initiative that we started with. But this is the team, so just in case you want to ask questions, you can go to any of these members, and we can, we can try to answer that for you. So I wanted to make sure I shared that. So, working with the MAP team, I want to talk about that a little bit and, and the work that we've done. So what we've done is, looking at our board goals that were adopted last year, you guys did a lot of work on that, and again, just to bring everybody under the fold, these were, these were the main categories, or these were the areas that you all created the board goals under. So one thing I'd like to share with you is the, the work and understanding that this is in draft form. The work that, that, that the MAP team has done is we've created some SMART goals. And in doing that, I just wanted to share with you, again, because this is in draft form, just wanted to share with you how this, we're not creating new work. We're creating work that you guys have already put forth and just highlighting under the guise of equity. So for example, I'm going to, I'm going to read to you some goals that, that the MAP team has created and, and, and share with you what goal, what board goals they fall under. So for example, Hope Public Schools will reduce the percentage of students of color failing core subjects. And we planned on beginning this work kind of looking under the, the area of our algebra classes. So under areas of board, this goes under academic programs and the learning environment and culture. Going to the next, Hope Public Schools will increase representation of people of color in teaching positions equal to 10% by 24, 20%, by 27, and equal or, or different student population by 2030. So we, last month, Robert Dozier got on and was able to speak about our data and what our representation was right now, students of color. So again, we came up with a goal using our, our school data and information from surveys that the parents had filled out, the staff had filled out, and this is how we've created these. So this falls under the area of personnel and leadership. Next, Hope Public Schools will implement a short essay to access for all families with questions specific to offering a safe and welcoming environment. So this whole goal here, we got some data that, you know, some parents didn't feel necessarily welcomed or safe when they came to the district. So we wanted to address that. And in doing that, you know, we could access, trying to increase our, our communication with parents to make sure that, that we're improving on these pieces. So under the board goal areas, learning environment and culture and operations. Hope Public Schools will decrease suspensions and expulsions of students of color. Goes directly under learning environment and culture. So again, these are directly related to the board goals adopted. Hope Public Schools will increase vertical growth of our staff of color when positions are available with identified purposeful mentorship to ensure that administrative positions are successful and more reflective of our student population and would be equal to a hiring percentage equal to the difference, differences in our student population. So again, this one will go under our personnel and leadership. The last, last area, the only area that, that wasn't necessarily covered by a goal that the MAP team had constructed was was under this area of communications and community involvement. Now, I'm proud to say that he, as a, as a collective, has definitely been working in this area. So, the definition of this goal that was created for the board, or excuse me, from the board, really was to encourage, facilitate, and track multidirectional communication to stakeholders. So, one area that I know, me personally, I have spoken with one of our our parents who is who is blind, is seeking, how can we make our communication specifically through heat? How can we make our communication through our agendas? Because, you know, this parent in particular would like to be involved in heat. So, but using SharePoint, for example, is very difficult for her devices. So we need to, you know, come against that barrier and make it more easily accessible for her to access our 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 agendas so she can participate. So little things like that. Again, I'm proud to say that that heat is working on that. So, next steps. Kind of look, you know, where where is heat going? What are, what are you trying to do next? Really looking at the evolution of heat, going through the months, you guys hearing all the different components. The next step that, going from all of the data and everything that we've collected would be that we would look to the board for an authorization for a diversity, equity, and inclusion, a DEI director position. Now, the reason why this is presented in this fashion is for this, the understanding that this is a district level position. So this is something that would be brought to the board for a a formal recommendation. So I would like for you to keep that in in the in the forefront of your brain. Because what this position would allow us to do is to continue to take this work that is, that is, again, highly important. And continue to take us forward as a district. We are, heat is involved, as you guys have already heard, involved with many other districts here in the greater Lansing area. Through a specific group called the Mid Michigan Great, excuse me, Mid Michigan Good Trouble Coalition. Which, again, is just a partnership with with pretty much all of the surrounding districts. As a matter of fact, had a meeting earlier today with Williamson. And they would like to know, how can we get involved? How can we, can we kind of piggyback on some of the things that you guys are doing? So just know that Halt, the the word is getting out that that we're doing some, some, some very needed, some very good work. And I would like us to continue that and and take that to the next level. So I want to leave you with a, with a quote from the lyrics that you saw. And it said that children will grow on the seeds that we sow. They listen. So our kids are listening to us. And what we feed them, what we, what we impart into them is what is going to help them grow into where they are to become. So I, I just, I thank you guys for your time, for your, your attention. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to to try and answer.
Thank you, Mr. Billingsley. Does anyone have any questions that they'd like to ask Mr. Billingsley about the work that's going on within heat currently?
Not a question, just thank you for all your good work and hard work. It is appreciated.
I'll echo that, thank you. That was a lot of great information. It sounds like you guys have been really busy, so we appreciate all of the hard work of the the heat groups.
Busy, busy is an understatement, but yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Billingsley.
Yeah, I appreciate your time.
All right, we'll move to board policy update, Ms. Bureau.
We have not had a policy meeting since our fall update. We still have one piece of that fall update that we need to bring back to the board. We've kind of been tossing it around, actually. I've been tossing it around and I've resent it to the two other trustees, which is the the mask policy. There's been back and forth when we needed or if it should stay in guidelines. But we'll be bringing that as soon as we can get together with Mrs. Dalton, Ms. Jones. The only other thing we have, there's no spring update yet. I'm anticipating that coming out in the next 30 days. There's been no, I I suspect in the next update, there will probably be a revision to that mask policy, as well as a few of the others that we had adopted or made changes to this past year. There seems to be a lot of changes going on right now. Also, when we get to talking about the football stadium later, if we do choose to go ahead, Dr. Horneck is correct on asking to suspend the policy 7250. The only other thing we have going is kind of not really policy, but it is next on the agenda. And I have that too, would be the MASP Board of Directors elections. And everybody received a packet that had all of the local candidates and the bios that they supplied. It would be for Region Seven of MASP, a three year term. And there were five people who submitted bios. So we, as a board collectively, would need to decide and vote on a candidate. And then tomorrow, we will submit. I will submit the ballot on the board's behalf. So we are at the point where we need to, we need to discuss our choices for Region Seven Board of Directors for MASP.
They're just electing or nominating one person? Or is it two, one? Okay.
Well, ultimately, we need to, we need to submit one name. Right? For a three year term. So we can all discuss and nominate as many, but when we go to cast our ballot, we need one.
Do you have any recommendation or?
I personally, reading through the bios, liked Mr. Jack Tempsy from Havel Public Schools. He was, he was my favorite. I felt he you know, he's had plenty of experience at the local level on the local school board. He also served six years in the Eaton RESA. He also has had MASP experience in the Bylaws and Resolution Committee and the Government Relations Committee and the Curriculum Instruction Committee. And I just, in his bio, you know, he he spoke to what he, what he sees in the, in the ups and downs of education. And it wasn't all about him. It kind of gave a little perspective on his thought process, and I really appreciated that. So I really liked Jack Tempsy, and he would be one I would nominate.
I'd say he was also at the top or near the top of my list. So I don't have a problem with that.
I would also be in agreement. He stuck out to me.
He was my top choice as well.
All right, well, with that, I would entertain a motion then.
That was far easier than I thought it was going to be. Okay, I would make a motion that we submit Mr. Jack Tempsy as our Board of Directors candidate for Region Seven.
Second. I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Bureau, if you could do a roll call vote.
Ms. Bureau, yes. Mr. Halpern?
Yes.
Ms. Robel?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. It will move to superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Perry. Much of our academic work is, as you know, captured by our curriculum directors. As a result, I'll attempt to avoid duplicating that. Couple things out of the gate. I hope to be joining Paige and Mr. Willard for office hours. While I've been conceiving this idea of holding office hours. When I was talking to Mr. Willard about that, he said, hey, Paige and I already have it started. So why don't you join us instead of, again, complicating things and starting an additional date in time? So I'll be jumping in tomorrow. I won't be able to make the opening, but I'll be there. So if there are students on that have questions, I'll be available. A couple of things just to highlight, you can read the report, but I am going to be taking you to the exit surveys. I had promised in the board packet in February that you would have option to see our exit surveys. Just a reminder. We send an exit survey to all families that leave us between count days. So while count day is coming up in February, the spring count day, I'll be asking our pupil accountant to give me the contact information for anyone who left us from October to February, and I'll be sending again here later this month the exit surveys. And as you can see, and the math may have changed slightly, but of the responses, 57% would return to Hope Public. And the bulk are sitting this year out because of the virtual delivery. And then others said they would come back if they moved back to the area. But there was some constructive feedback there. I don't want it to sound to the public like everyone who's returned to survey was thrilled with Hope Public. We have things to work on. Okay, that is a fact. Those have also been shared with the curriculum office. And and as I mentioned, maybe a month or two ago, I fill out a lot of surveys and I don't always know if if they're being addressed. And so I chose to send a postcard to every family that sent in a survey and gave us feedback. So as I transition, a few other things I'd like to share, some of the things that we've been doing. Again, you heard tonight, we are actively engaged with the Midwest and Plains Equity Assistance Center. So while we've been going through strategic planning, specific to equity, our equity work. We're also on a bi-monthly, so every two months, we're on a call with a consultant. And we're partnered with a school district in Illinois. And so we're able to work on our things here in Hope Public, but we're also able to broaden our partnerships with that that particular school district. It's it's been nice. So there are times where I'll be bouncing things off of their superintendent. So we're thought partners. I'd also like to share that my recent PB includes equity work, some safe schools training regarding bloodborne pathogens, COVID-19 mandated reporting, and managing stress and anxiety related to COVID-19. In addition to the Great Lakes Equity Center and equity oriented strategic planning. I also attended a training this past month that was put on by a group from Mid Michigan. And they hosted, or we hosted, Trayvon Martin's mother. That was very interesting to hear her message. And then I also attended the abolitionist Teaching Network presentation last month as well. In addition, I went to a session regarding school resource officers. And and then finally, I'd just like to remind you all that we'll be engaging our community in a community conversation regarding the role of the school resource officer in building some capacity around that. So at this point, that concludes the superintendent's report unless you have questions.
All right, thank you, Dr. Horneck. I just have one quick thing. Board members that took part, I think everybody did, either Thursday or Saturday in working with Dr. Horneck and walking through the buildings in the district to get a firsthand knowledge of what those buildings would look like and what the conditions are in and to ask a lot of different questions. But having looked through three buildings, I just want to say thank you to all of our staff that got those buildings prepped. If you were to look at the cafeteria floor of the junior high, you thought you were at the Naval Academy. That thing was was buff. So, you know, again, thank everybody who got those buildings to get our kids back in the condition, in in Rick's crew. I'm sure I'm going to try to keep those as safe and clean as is whatever is humanly possible. So we'll move to the curriculum update.
Before we start, I did actually get the chance to see all the buildings. And as I say, it was not just those three buildings that you guys saw that were in top, top shape. I've never seen a building so clean as all, pretty much all the buildings as we visited in the district. So I was impressed with the, with the work that they've been doing over the, over the break. Not break, but over the no students in the building period.
All right, you ready for us, Mr. Perry?
Yeah, we are.
All right, thank you. So we will start our monthly presentation. A lot of it is similar to what you've seen in the past with updates. Let me get my screen going here. During tonight's, oh, can you see my screen? Great, all right, for tonight's presentation. I'm going to start with course guides and the scheduling timeline, just to touch base on that. They had questions from the community too, so I just wanted to clarify for everybody. Then we'll move into our academic data points. I do have the failure data from first semester to share with you from high school. We also have benchmarking data that Amanda Lance, one of our instructional coaches, worked really hard to get ready for you guys. And Steve will be speaking on that. We'll share our attendance as well as our data collection. We have preliminary numbers from the survey that was sent to the community about returning in person. We also have updates on our return to school transition, as well as then a final recommendation and public comment. So to start, I just wanted to revisit, we did adopt the course guides with revisions last month. I wanted to just let you know that the changes recommended have been changed. I also wanted to point you in the direction of a link that Christine Lopez sent to you that will give you access to a SharePoint space that looks like this. It'll say course guides and scheduling within it. Probably because there are updates to the course guides throughout the year, we'll find like a comma missing or a misspelling. I thought it might be helpful for you all to have access to a live cloud version of those documents. So each of these folders has the course guides for the building indicated. The high school also, Mr. Willard shared the parent night PowerPoints. I thought that might be helpful if you ever had a question specifically about what was shared with parents, as well as the specific scheduling timeline. So I'm going to pull this one up, the high school scheduling timeline, so people can see it as well as you all. Maybe we'll get there in a second, there we go. So this shows you the general dates when the scheduling happens. So it shows you which classes, what dates, and it's the classes based on the grade level. So, for example, on the third, they did the eighth graders that were going into ninth grade. On the 10th and 11th, they'll do the 10th graders. On the 24th, they'll be doing the ninth graders in geometry. And on the 16th and 17th, they'll be doing current juniors. So these classes. So these classes are required classes. And then students who don't have those classes, the counselors reach out to them separately to get them scheduled. So there is this process that is within the SharePoint space I shared. If there is, I don't know, another snow day or something happens where a date is missed, I'll make sure that the updates get placed on this timeline for you. Same with the junior high. If you go into the junior high folder, it has the, their timeline and their course guide as well. If you want to just review what changes we made last time we met, there's this 2122 course guide and scheduling document outside of the folders where included the notes from our last meeting, what changes needed to be made, and then confirmed with the building principals that those changes were made. There was one post-adoption change that I just wanted to let you know about. Mr. Willard noticed after the fact that our CAD program had been separate from our Project Lead the Way program and they were listed as separate courses. CAD is now a part of the Project Lead the Way program. So pages 67 to 69 in the high school manual have been updated to reflect that change. But otherwise, everything's what you saw. Any questions on the course guide materials? All right, then we will shift to academics.
Good evening, board. So before I start into the PowerPoint slide, first, I kind of like to share a brief narrative with you before we get started. The first piece is, as a reminder, that we will be posting to our transparency badge our progress towards our, our growth data that we've identified or academic goal stated at the top of our extended COVID plan. So that will be coming. I shared with you in the previous board meeting that we needed a little more time because we extended the testing window and we wanted to give adequate time for makeup. So I just kind of want to remind us of that. And Jessica alluded to it a little bit. The document Ms. Lopez shared with you probably today. I apologize for the tardiness of that document, but we needed more time to get our students benchmarked and get the data pulled. So you should have received that and we'll talk about that in a minute. But I think it's important to kind of share the, the work that has to go into getting benchmarks, to benchmarking students. And so just a quick flashback in time, last year, due to shifting of programs and different tools being accepted by the state and some other reasons, we switched to NWEA fifth through eighth grade and Ames Web Plus kindergarten, fourth grade. So we were experiencing last year a new benchmarking tools. We're learning about the tools, how to screen, assess, make decisions, and then the pandemic comes. And so what I want to acknowledge is we're going to talk about student growth, subgroup growth, but I think it's really important that, that I share the work that went into getting kids benchmarked. And this is not a one-person job. We have so many different people that make this happen. And so not only did we need a benchmark in the fall and the winter, we had to do it through remote learning. And that is quite the task. So thousands and thousands of kids got assessed. And I give tons of credit back to the buildings and the support teams. Our tech department have helped helping to problem solve. Amanda Lance, one of our instructional coaches, was a big support. So I, to start, I just want to acknowledge the work that it goes in to get this completed. It is a lot of work at the building level. So I want to thank those people and acknowledge the work that they do. So you have the document in your packet. I want to just highlight a few pieces within the academic portion of this. And also at the end of your document, you have some summary observations and we'll open up to questions. But the first piece is, we looked at just the percent of students who were tested by grade. And so as you look at reading and math, you can see across the document, the percent of students in your packet that were actually tested. And you'll notice across the grade levels in both reading and math, we tested more students. And so that is a strong reflection on our, our building systems, our outreach, our communication. So I, I like to compliment that we have more data in front of us than we did in the fall. If you'll notice that there is some missing data and that is intentional. You'll notice that kindergarten is missing from reading and K through four is missing from math. And as you look further in your document, there's an explanation of the why behind it. But to give you a brief overview, you know, kindergarten was in the middle of doing a lot of their own internal assessments that match what the Ames Web Plus assessment would be doing. So as a team, based on teacher feedback, we chose to take a different path and we did not benchmark with Ames Web Plus, but we rather used our internal assessments. And then for math, if you look at in the fall, you will see the low percentage that we had as second through fourth grade. And I explained back in the fall why that number was so low. And you can see in your document, it speaks to the issues we had with insecure browser and trying to get students on the test. We learned very quickly from that experience and we lost so much instructional time. There was a lot of frustration. We have enough internal data that we felt comfortable that we will move forward. And in the spring, we will benchmark on those assessments as well. So those are two pieces I wanted to highlight in the, the participation section of that document. Then as you, you look further through your document, it breaks it into the percent of students who tested average range or above, and we use the 26 percentile for that. Again, I want to emphasize, this is one single data point that is triangulated with many other data points that our classroom teachers collect. And so as you can see across the board, you can see some patterns. You'll notice that when we look at our lower grade levels, you might see a little more growth from fall to winter. And that is a reflection, there's a stronger opportunity for the growth because they're so young in their development. So that is a common trend we have seen for years, even when we were using Ames Web the previous five to seven years. You will notice that as we go across into our subgroups, you will see that some subgroups, there's growth from the fall to winter. And some groups, some subgroups, there is a decline from the fall to winter. And what happens with this data is a lot of that conversation flows back to the building and it happens at grade level meetings. And they drill down to the students, especially in the subgroups. They look at the student, they triangulate it with their internal data and to find, to work through next steps and ways to support the student, the individual student's growth moving forward. On the last page, you will see a summary of some observations through the work that we have to do that is evident. You know, we talked about our subgroup data and the discrepancy between all students in our subgroups. Yeah, we have some work to do in looking at our instruction, looking at our assessments, looking at ways to, to support these, support our students with the discrepancy of performance. That is not new. That's something we continue to focus on. I also, I also want to reiterate that when we look at our students and we see not 100% participation, I want to, to share with you that there's a couple of reasons. They didn't finish, maybe they didn't attend class that day. But I do want to emphasize, they had multiple opportunities to try to do the makeup. So, you know, at some point, as a team, as a district team, we, we cut off the window and said, after two to three weeks, if we cannot get a student assessed, we have to move forward and continue with our instruction. So I wanted just to bring that to your attention as well. So again, in front of you, you have math and reading, kindergarten through eighth, you have some subgroup data and as well as some overall observations. So I would guess I open up to questions in regards to this data.
Mr. Nessel, I have a question for you. So I'm looking at the, I guess, the reading and the math data, although of course, there's a little more to look at, to compare fall and winter under the reading data. I guess what I'm wondering is, I'm curious how this would compare to a different year? Because, you know, we talk about learning loss from the spring. We've lots of times talked about learning loss that occurs over the summer. And I guess I'm wondering how our fall, how our students compared in the fall of 2020 to, let's say, the fall of 2019? And I know we always talk about cohorting and especially this year of all years, it's probably not realistic to follow them along. But I'm just wondering, how do these numbers compare? And is it, is it common to have winter scores where fewer kids fall in that 26 percentile or above? Or is this really unique to this school year?
That is an amazing question. And this is probably one of the hardest pieces for me to swallow as looking at data is, we've broken up all type of trend lines and data points we've had over years. So what I mean by that, Testy Dalton, is when we're doing these screeners, we usually provide a battery of, a battery of screeners, multiple screeners, where this year, we chose to really narrow it down to the, to the bare minimum because we knew of the task to try to get the students assessed. And so, you know, when we look at first grade, for instance, for reading, we did only oral reading fluency. In a traditional school year, we might give multiple screeners and then we, we combine them all together to get an outcome. And that's the same as we go up through second, third, and fourth. So unfortunately, I don't feel comfortable giving a general outcome of how they compared from the fall to fall of this year because I think we're looking at apples and oranges and it's really hard to compare. What I can say traditionally, traditionally is usually from second grade up, we usually see a dip between fall and winter. And then we see kids kind of move back up in the spring. So that is a, that is a normal trend that I think we'll see because the expectation increases between fall and winter. And sometimes our students aren't on that path or that pace yet, but we'll see them later in the, in the spring catch up, is my hunch.
Thank you.
I was just meeting with Amanda on Friday as we're talking through this data. And I brought up, I'm wondering what from 2019 fall we can compare to 2020 because we can't do spring, right? And, and we could maybe pull off winter at the best. So that is something that we are going to pull together and we will try to pull together similar accurate data points to reflect that. But what I can, what I, a comparative data point that I will share with you is the IRE, right? So for the past few years, I've always shared with you guys, fall, winter, spring, our number of kids that get individual reading improvement plans, which is based on multiple data points to showing their year behind. That is something I feel more comfortable with using as a comparative tool than, than maybe this benchmarking data. Because this takes in account the teachers, assessments, observations, those type of pieces as well.
Excellent. I, I have just one other question for you. I wonder when I look at this data, right now, the way it's presented is I see the percent of students who fell in the average range. But I'm wondering, is it possible to pull the data in such a way that we could see the percent of students who showed growth and the percent of students who didn't? Do you know what I'm saying? So a little more individual, I guess.
Yep, and I will tell you, I had two one-on-one meetings with two different elementary principals and I asked how their grade level meetings went. And that's exactly what they talked about at the building level is they looked at individual kids and they looked at individual growth and what students were making growth, which ones were not, and some causal theories on why behind. And then looked at the services. So I can look overall and try to get a district perspective, but I can tell you that is, that is the power of the work that's going on at the individual buildings. That actually just wrapped up this last week, so. But yes, I will look into that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Nessel? All right. Now for the academics for secondary, and it's actually just for the high school. We do NWEA benchmarking at 78. In your board packet, you have a document that looks like that. You get one every month that looks the same. It should be around the PowerPoint, so around page 210 in your, the big board packet. Pages three and four of that have the failure rates for the high school. Looks like the other table, color table. I'll give you a second to scroll and find those. There's also more detail, and this was attached for you, much more detailed documents that have every single course and not just the pass fail, but the number of students with every letter grade. So if you want to dig into a much more detailed document, that is available as well. So the high school course failure rates, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the two different sets of data there on page three of that document. I mean, seeing here on the PowerPoint, one on the left, one on the right. The data looks a little different because I'm never sure quite what to do. And I wanted to be fully transparent with courses that provide the same credit for students. So for our students to get credit in US history, for example, they can take US history or they can take an American studies course that counts as US history and their English credit. For world history, they could take world history or AP world history. So when I'm providing you with failure rates, one of the tables does not include any sections that provide credit for that course except for the Singleton Core Course with that name. The second set of data does provide any honors, AP or integrated studies courses that provide credit for that same course. Does that make sense to you? Okay, so I never know which set of data is the accurate one to share out. So I wanted to be fully transparent and give you both. Both of them do show a shift from 19 to 20 as far as an increase in the failure rate. I don't, and these are just our core Michigan merit courses for ninth, 10th, and 11th graders, and then economics, and then it's the seniors course. Every single course does show an increase in the failure rate, some more significantly than others. In talking with teachers and administrators around how we're going to problem solve, we can have a two-pronged approach in the way we're thinking about the failure rates. The first is preventative, looking at what we saw this past semester and how we would address it. The second is reactive. How are we going to respond to ensure that the students who failed courses this past semester have a chance to recoup credit? So that, those options I have on the slide and we'll talk through those. I do want to acknowledge that I've had some pretty in-depth conversations with teachers who noticed that engagement is tough for kids right now. And we have a lot of causal theories on why engagement is tough for students. But that engagement, whether it's a reading or writing intensive assignment or persevering through a particular task has been a challenge with online learning. And I think the parents we've heard from and the student we've heard from have said that same thing. It's been a challenge to engage and persevere for lots of different reasons. Something else I'd like to point out on here is while this shows you the failure rate, it doesn't show you, the other documents would show you a shift in grades from students who maybe in the past had As and Bs. In this time, they, you know, they received more Bs and Cs. And we heard a student say that just didn't feel like me. That's not usually what I do. So I think looking at failure rates is just one part of the story that we saw students who didn't necessarily fail but still struggled with school differently than they had in the past. So looking ahead at how we can ensure that students have an opportunity to recoup the credits that they maybe lost this semester. And that's what's on the slide here is looking for options for credit recovery that are more flexible than we have potentially in the past. Some of you were on the board several years ago when we adopted something called the replace retake policy. That was, it came out of some research that showed that students who enter college sometimes fail their early semesters and their GPA gets driven so low that they drop out because they don't feel like they can overcome the failures early on. And a lot of institutions are looking at adopting where students can retake the course in the grade they received the second time around replaces the first grade. So it's kind of a, a way to have a fresh start and to not continue to, to be plagued by, you know, those early learning curve experiences that kids have. be plagued by, you know, those early learning curve experiences that kids have. And we are a learning institution and we really wanted to value students having a chance to recoup learning and not be bound to the grades they'd received previously. Under our original replace retake policy, students could only replace or retake a course in the same mode they received it the first time. So if I took a class face-to-face, I couldn't then take an online version and have that count. That is something that will be different in this case. So because our students did not receive credit in remote pandemic setting, we are not going to require them to repeat the course in a remote pandemic setting, fingers crossed. So the hope would be when they recoup the class, either through summer school or through, we're looking at potentially offering evening classes or a seventh hour, we're, we're brainstorming lots of ideas to give this flexibility. That when they retake the course, it would replace the initial course and that would include the, include, including being recalculated on your GPA. And students actually have that option for any class they receive. I believe it's a C minus or lower end. So even if they didn't fail a class this past semester, perhaps felt that they received a grade that they would like to try again on. They can have the option to do that as well. So looking ahead, we've got the replace retake policy or practice that we hope to employ. We are looking at, we intentionally chose standards for students this semester. How can we be flexible where when they retake the class, they're just showing proficiency on the standards that they did not master the first time through? So thinking about that standards-based instruction, what do they still need to show last year? Summer school options in the past, we've done an online edgenuity version, but now that we have teachers with Google classrooms built out, how can we tap into that as a resource for maybe some different ways to take online summer school? I have talked with Ms. Cosgrove about the grant money we have access to, so that summer school could be a free option for students, for anyone who wants to take summer school. And then next year, of course, kids, often they retake a class just within their six-hour day. But if a student wanted to maintain their current program of study and, and not reduce their day by retaking a course, they, we're looking at after school in online options for that as well. So just want to let you know, we're definitely problem solving around this. Unfortunately, I am seeing similar data across the county, across the state. I, I think we know that remote learning has been hard for students and we really want to just have a problem-solving demeanor around it that like, this is okay, we're going to get through it, we're going to give you lots of options to recoup the credit. And I, I don't want students to feel that it's a hole they can't climb out of. I've talked a lot, I'm sorry. What questions do you have about that stuff?
Jessica, you know, if I'm, I'm a parent and my student is really struggling with the online, you know, where do I go for help?
Would depend on what the struggle is. For some students, it is a lack of connection and an emotional response to feeling isolation, in which case I'd say we need to get them connected to a guidance counselor. If it's a student who's having trouble persevering through a, a task because they're stuck and they don't know the answer, I would ask them to set up a time during the office hours portion of the teacher's day to get one-on-one help. Honestly, what I'm hearing from teachers is they have more flexibility to give one-on-one help. They, they just have to set up those appointments to, to make the time work for kids. So I would encourage them to reach out to the teacher if that's the case.
Thank you.
Other questions on this data?
A quick question for you, Jessica. I wonder if you've seen, I have not, but I, I keep thinking about this. What you said is you're seeing across the, the state and the area, the kids are struggling with remote learning. What, what I'm wondering is, do we have data from schools that have been in-person? And do we know how much of this is struggling with remote learning and how much of this is struggling with pandemic learning? You know what I mean?
Yeah, that's a great question because a lot of districts that are in person also have altered schedules and they might not have sports or the clubs that the kids are used to, that pandemic learning is not normal learning. So that's a great question. And, and I have not seen that. Most of the, the news that picks up school stories can't find the most extreme examples. And that's what I'm reading, is what I'm finding online. So that's a great question though. I, I, we do have a couple of schools in the county that are, have been doing those. And I would be interested to hear what their numbers look like.
I, I, I'm just thinking about that because as we talk about students returning to in-person learning, I just want to make sure that, you know, that we all understand that there are still a lot of pressures that students are dealing with right now because of the pandemic that, that won't necessarily be resolved by being in person, right? Just to, you know,
Yeah.
job loss and financial hardship and, you know, not being able to have contact with, you know, family members. There's just, so there's a lot of factors at play that I, that I think maybe influence where students are at. So I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, we go into in-person instruction with our eyes open and realize that, you know, it's not necessarily going to be all sunshine and roses just because bodies are back in schools.
Yeah. Yep. And that's, that's a great point. When we think about, you know, Maslow's hierarchy of needs and all the, all the needs that must be met before we can engage in cognitively complex tasks. And you exacerbate that with a pandemic. Yeah, I think that's an important thing. As we shift to a, an in-person option, that's a conversation we've had a lot is attending to the social emotional needs of our staff and our students, that coming into a building with a lot of people will be a big transition in and of itself. And that going full force into, you know, the same number of standards and the same pace we had before is probably unrealistic. But just being sensitive to, we, we don't know the stories of all our students. And we, we never will. But we have to treat each student as if they, they have stuff going on we don't know about. And in extend the grace to them and the patience that, that they would need.
Thank you.
Other questions on the data before we move to attendance?
All right.
All right. So the next two slides are probably our most familiar, consistent slides within our, our learning plan. Just a reminder that when we are taking attendance at kindergarten through sixth grade, that they are taking attendance for, at one time throughout the day. And so I would caution us to, as we look at these numbers, which look great, to just keep that in mind as we process through this. As we discussed at a previous board meeting, when we looked at comparative data, I believe it was like November to November, from the traditional day, our numbers were similar. But again, I would caution us with the way attendance is being taken. As we move into secondary, it's different. It's probably a little more reflective than our T K six process. But again, you can see a three-week trend or excuse me, four-week trend along with their average attendance in, within our, our district. So any questions on attendance? Similar format as the previous reports.
All right. That takes us into our most updated metrics. Every month I do like to update you on the metrics. This most recent dashboard is on the website. Same spot as always, under that reopening badge. There's also a little trend analysis this time. We did do some projecting a little bit to see how we anticipate the data will continue to move. At this point, we are seeing, especially for the entire state of Michigan, a trend in the, in the right direction as far as downward trend in number of new daily cases, a, a lower percentage of positivity rates. And then the new cases continue to decline. Now, Ingham County is moving more slowly than the rest of the state as far as those trend lines. I did hear through the grapevine that that could be due to cases at Michigan State, but I have not had that confirmed. We do know there, there's been a request that students at MSU stay in their dorms. I'm guessing that might be related. So the overall trend is that the data is moving in a direction where we do feel by mid-March, we would be in a better spot. Now, when we met with a community task force a couple of weeks ago, we did have some medical professionals that said, you know, that the data is trending in a better direction. They're seeing more, feeling a little more optimistic. But that doesn't mean we don't need to still be cautious with the new variants that we're seeing. And I, several people commented after last month when I mentioned my favorite epidemiologist, but I do have a couple I follow on Twitter that are tracing the percent growth of the variants and what that could mean with the vaccines and whether or not they're still effective. And so we are still watching. Just because the data is trending doesn't mean we start to ignore it. But we are cautiously optimistic. Do you have any questions on the metrics? All right. Then that takes us to probably the data you're a little more interested in at this point, where we are with our in-person survey.
So a couple of quick things before we probably, all of our eyes went to the right-hand side, if it's your right-hand side with the survey. But I just want to remind you, on the left is the quantitative and qualitative data that we have been collecting. You can see it various collection from academic to feedback to questions. And so we are constantly using that feedback loop, trying to get information from our community. One thing I want to just bring up is we were scheduled to send out our next learning environment, or excuse me, our remote instruction survey. That is the one that goes out to our, our parents slash guardians, our students and our staff to ask about remote instruction. We paused on sending it out this week, so we did not confuse families and everyone with multiple surveys. So I will share with you that we will send that out next week at some point. And that survey again is to get feedback around our remote instruction. So our plan was supposed to go out, just the timing did not work. So what I would like to kind of share with you and walk through the table on the, the right part of the slide or my right. This is the survey, we, this went out Friday morning between eight and 11 o'clock a.m. And it came from the building principals. And the survey closes, I believe, Thursday at eight o'clock. And so what we asked the building principals to send us by three o'clock today was an update of what they are seeing in their building at this point. So again, this is reflective of three o'clock today. And you will see, for example, I'll just read through them. So if our public has trouble seeing, you'll notice Midway has, they're expecting 108 responses. They've gotten 28% in, and that is about 65% in person. I'll remind you that Midway already has lots of kids already in their building, so that's why their number looks low. This is just their G S R P students at this point. So I wanted to clarify. Diamonddale, they have 52% of their responses are in, and 64% are saying they would like in-person. Elliott, 40% have returned and about 60% in-person. Horizon, 58% have returned and about 50% are requesting in-person. Sycamore, about 54% have returned the survey. 65% are saying in-person. Wilcox, 59% has, have submitted. 61% are saying in-person. Washington Woods, 57% have responded and 51% are saying in-person. Hope, 49% have responded, 53% in-person. Hope Junior High, 39% with 47% saying in-person. And finally, Holt High School, 47% and 50% are saying in-person. So again, the survey goes out, stays active until eight o'clock on Thursday. I know there was a question in public comment that the survey is asking for a four-week commitment. When you submit this survey, we are working with the building principals about different procedures when it comes to changing after four weeks. But again, I wanted to address that because it was a, a question that was asked. And so, um, any questions in regards to our survey results at this time?
So, so to be clear, Steve, I think with the, and I may not have been a student, it might have been a parent, but it sounded like a student. If, if a student came for, for those four weeks in person and decided that the next four weeks, they wanted to go back to instruction, that's still being discussed amongst the, the high, the, the principals of the schools, correct?
I'll clarify that, Dr. London. She was a student, because I had her at Elliott when I was a principal. That's why I recognized the name. So after four weeks, they will have an option to switch their mode of instruction after four weeks. Well, what we have to acknowledge is that we want that four-week commitment, but there are some situations we're going to have to come across with students, whether it's medical things or whatever. And we're going to have to be a little flexible, but we're, we're really trying to ask for that four-week commitment from our, our families. And that's for the purpose of attendance, safety. We need to know who's coming in and out of our schools and where they're supposed to be.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions on this data?
Well, I, I just have a question. When we look at, at this data, because in, in walking through the buildings, when we think about spacing, I think that it seems like in the buildings I looked at, the, the rooms were set up for probably around 50% of the students there. And I'm just wondering what it means when that number is higher than 50%? Because I, I know that the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the CDC has called for de-densifying classrooms as one of the main strategies that needs to be in place in order for, in learning, in school, learning to continue. And I guess my concern is, so how do we de-de-densify, right? Because as far as I can tell, there's probably three ways we can make it happen. One, we get a whole, you know, like we double our number of classrooms, double our staff, and then we can have smaller classes, which of course is not possible. Or we have only a portion of the students come on certain days and another portion come on certain days. So we have smaller class sizes, which, which we haven't suggested doing. So this third option is to just really depend on those who, who stay home and continue remote instruction to keep those numbers down. And so I guess what I'm wondering is what happens if that doesn't happen? What happens if 80% of the people want to come back or 100% of the people want to come back? Then we are not de-densifying the, the classes. And, and I guess that's my biggest concern. And so I'm just wondering like, how, how do we address this? Because some of these numbers are, are larger than what we can, you know, how, than what we can afford in, in classrooms. Are, are we considering shuffling students to different buildings? Or what would this look like?
I'd like to add a third variable to that as well, not to make it messier, but most of our safety protocols are built on the metrics meeting a certain level. So we had said there's kind of a direct correlation between, and I guess the distancing is the safety protocol. So maybe it's not making it more complicated than what you're saying, but, but there's a direct correlation between the safety protocols themselves and how they must be observed and the number of students and the metrics. So if the metrics are high, you need more safety protocols, which means fewer students. Metrics look better. There might be a couple of protocols, like they've gone from six feet to three feet with masks. Like, we're using the guidance. And, but you're right, we, it's been Holt, Holt's kind of taking a gamble on how many students are going to want to come in-person. And then at that point, it's looking at each building because like the high school classrooms are so much larger than, you know, Diamonddale's fourth grade classroom. So then you got to look at what spaces do you have in your building. And we have buildings that have additions. And in those additions, some of those spaces are bigger. And we have some buildings that have activity rooms and gyms and cafeterias, and some that have one cafeteria. So the spaces are different in each building. So in the end, I think it'll be a little bit of a detective work for each of us. How many students in each room? What's the capacity of the room at the required six feet? And, or, or three feet depending on masks and shields. And then what other spaces are available in the building? And, and we have talked, i- if, if it was 100%, we would have to cohort. We, we couldn't fit 100% back under the required protocols. We don't want to do that. It reduces the amount of in-person time for kids by half. But some of our neighboring districts have done that for that exact reason.
So Trusty Don, can I add a little bit to that? So, and I can't speak necessarily to 712 because So, and I can't speak necessarily to seven 12 because Jess did the walkthroughs with there. But I can speak to TK six and Dr. Hager and I know you were with me, I think at every one of those buildings. And, and there was a why, and, and I don't agree, I don't disagree with, with some of the spacing issues. But I would share that there was a lot of classrooms I went to that were set up for 70% or 100%. For the students to return. I would say there were quite a few classrooms I went into that were set up for 70% or 100%. And some, a lot of them had three feet of distance or more. It was depending on the structure of their room, the desks or tables. And there were some classrooms, you're right, trustee Dalton, they were shoulder to shoulder and there was no distance between them. And they were set up for 22 students. So you know, as Jess alluded to, I mean, I think we're going to have to do some problem solving. But, but when I walked through those, those seven buildings, I saw a lot of classrooms that were appropriately spaced. I saw a lot of classrooms that needed some work and hopefully. You know, it's 50% of those kids or 60 in order to get the social distancing. But I think that I would, I would like to delve into the next layer. Once we know the number of students, be able to go around to the classrooms and see what the actual distance is able to, we're able to do. So I, I don't know for sure, but I felt pretty confident with a lot of the rooms I went in that it might, it could get there.
Yeah, it was kind of my.
The percentage?
Excuse me?
You mean regardless of the percentage they could get there?
There were some classrooms that were set up for 22 kids and they were at least three feet apart.
Yeah, I would say that. It's a problem is largely in the, in the furniture in the rooms. So some rooms have individual desks and the, the teachers were able to work with that a lot better. And so a lot of classrooms, of course, we've all kind of gone away from individual desks. And we, we put, you know, either two-person desks or circular tables in a lot of those rooms. And, you know, there's not much they could do. I would, I, I would kind of say that most of the classes that I saw were not set up for 100%. They were more set up for 70% at the elementary level. There were only a few that were set up for a full, a full class. What's going to be, it's, it's going to be challenging though. I mean, even if we do say that they're going to sit three or six feet apart. With the, especially with the younger students, are we actually going to be able to keep them, you know, three or six feet apart? And that's, that's the harder part. I think some classrooms are going to be better set up than others, but most of them were pretty close.
Any other thoughts on the numbers? We do.
You know, we went through on Saturday there that, you know, most of those classrooms that we looked at, I thought were near 100%. Because we kept asking the question, you know, is this classroom, if every kid came back, would this be what it would look like? And the answer to that was yes. You know, the elementary building just seemed like were, were more of the challenge whereby. Obviously at the high school, there's, there's a lot more space there. But to the, like the activity room, the gymnasium, because we're not going to use those. Those become alternative spaces where, you know, if, if you did have a grade that went to, you know, 75% of the kids returning. We could always use that space. Not ideal, I mean, but not very cozy for kids to. You know, be sitting in a gymnasium versus a classroom. But, you know, there, there's some other alternatives there.
And we have to remember too, that the percent by building isn't necessarily equitably distributed by classroom. So you might have one teacher who has 40% of their kids and another that has 80. So that's what I meant by it'll require some legwork by us to audit each space almost individually. Even just the beginning rosters themselves, a, a ninth grade US history teacher is going to have more students in their class than the newspaper class. So it, if I'm starting with 31 kids at capacity on a roster. Versus a classroom that's starting with 17 kids. Then even then, the percentage, you know, is going to, they're going to have different numbers, even if the percentage was equally distributed.
Well, in the same room, since you have six different hours or five different hours in the same room, you're going to have different percentages in each hour. So some of them might be full and some of them might not be. I mean, realistically, if the goal is to keep people six feet apart. I don't, I don't know that we can get there in all the buildings. I, I actually, I know we can't get there in all the buildings. If the goal is to keep three, put people three feet apart, I think we can get there in, you know, most of the buildings, probably maybe all the buildings. Does that matter? And the littlest kids, they seem to be a little more resistant to transmission. I'd hate to bank on that with the new variants coming out, that they're, they're more resistant to transmission. But I do think the buildings were set up as, you know, as. I was impressed that they were able to do what they did with the spaces that they have. So I think they did the best they could. Now, was the best they could good enough? I hope so.
Dr. Hager, your comment makes me think about the families who have asked what instruction will look like in the in-person environment. And just by the nature of our conversation, and how do we keep them three feet, four feet, six feet apart? With their masks, with their desk shields. I hope that, I hope that the public recognizes that we're painting a picture of students sitting in a space. And maintaining their distance from each other and from the teacher while, while receiving instruction. Which we talk about, this won't be pre-pandemic instruction for a reason. It isn't that we are asking students to stay in their desk and continue remote learning because it's easier. We're asking to, because it's safer and that's going to be really hard. It's not the way any of us were taught to teach. But we do want to keep a cognizance around an expectation that students will stay distant from each other in a classroom. Which means staying in their space, using their desk shield, keeping their mask on. And one of the probably most effective ways to instruct when students are in that space. If we want to maintain connection between our students who are remote and our students who are in person is to continue to use Google Classroom. Which I've heard Dr. Hornick mentioned several times, that we will be asking kids to engage with their peers through a digital environment. Does that mean they'll be on their screen all day? No, we don't, we don't want our kids on a screen all day now while we're in remote instruction. But it will be a part of their day and, and there will be an expectation they stay in their seats except for, for organized recess. Or they're taken individually out at younger levels. But it, it will be different and I hope people can hear through this conversation and start envisioning that difference.
Jessica, are you hearing, you know, I've listened to a couple of schools say that in the younger grades, the students have done a remarkable job. Adapting to the fact that they have to wear face masks, the fact that they can't hug each other and whatnot. Are, are you hearing that as well?
Our own early childhood director has said that about the three and four-year-olds she works with. And it's been remarkable, their ability to wear the masks and get used to it and follow the procedures. And, you know, they, they look to us to model those behaviors. We had a parent that mentioned that to us after one of the walkthroughs, like we need to model the behaviors and that they'll, you know, that they have been doing remarkably well. I've heard that as well. Which kind of leads us to the next slide. We can continue with the, the data. But just the, the whole, it all fits together in one big picture of how we're transitioning to the in-person era of the school year. And just a reminder to families, anyone listening, that we do need those surveys filled out by Thursday evening. There's going to be a lot of number crunching and you guys can all hear now what that means for us. As far as looking at every roster, counting everybody, going into every room. So there will be a lot of legwork that comes from the selection. And that's one of the reasons we're asking families to commit to four weeks. Because that's how we're, we're gauging the effectiveness of our safety protocols. We have to know the number of students in each room and know the number in each building and revisit our protocols. So there is a request that they, once we start in person, that it's a four-week commitment. I also wanted to remind everyone, I, I think we've shared it a couple of times, but the district website under that reopening badge. Now has an, an updated reopening plan, updated district protocols. It's now a PDF, so families should be able to access all of the district protocols. And then there's a Q and A document for TK six, seven, eight and nine, 12. Those documents will continue to update them as we get, you know, more information about number of students and, and protocols and whatnot. So I just ask people to, you know, visit the website if they have any questions about any of the protocols, any of that stuff. We'll keep it updated. We thoroughly discussed the walkthroughs. If there's anything more you want to add, let me know. But just know the conversation on PPE is not done. We are every day still talking with staff. What do you need to feel safe? We're checking on, you know, the filters and the HVAC in the, you know, like it's a constant conversation to ensure every space is safe. So last week we had the webinars. We continue to hold the Thursday office hours. We continue to hire. We're posting lots of positions, looking at bringing students supervisors as well as long-term subs into every building. Ideally, we have a significant increase in the number of adults to help the kids with the new protocols and policies. Kim might be able to let us know more specific date, but there will be a letter going home about transportation soon. So families will know their pickup time, wrap-up time. All that information will also be housed in PowerSchool. So that'll get turned on and people can see through the parent portal their transportation information. That second to last bullet there, I kind of mentioned that a little earlier. We, we will begin working with our teachers on what does this hybrid environment look like? One of our biggest commitments is that it's an equitable experience. It will be the same learning targets for the in-person and remote students. It'll be the same pacing. They will work together in groups through Google Classroom. We, we want to preserve the classroom community as much as possible. We also need to work with our teachers to find what's their comfort and how are they going to record some videos and post those? Do they want to try to teach live? What webcam do they need? Does their Ziggy pick up the sound? We've ordered hundreds of Chromebooks so that students who come in that maybe were using a personal device at home can borrow a Chromebook. From school when they start coming in. It's going to be a big shift, but we're starting the process now to, to figure out how that works in each building. Last bullet on this one had been brought up in a couple of community forums. I just wanted to address this. For a very short time, we will be letting students carry their backpacks with them. It seemed, it would, it would be unfair to ask them to carry their Chromebooks around at the secondary level all day with all their books. Every other, their coat and not have a locker. So because we're not issuing lockers due to the three feet, six feet conversation. And I, I wanted to remind everyone that the junior high is historically shared lockers. And the high school has this lovely above each other locker situation. So if you wanted to go every other locker, you'd really have to go every four. Because otherwise you're just still really close to somebody. So because the lockers are, are difficult to issue, we will continue to visit the metrics and the CDC guidelines. And as soon as it is safe to issue lockers, we'll issue lockers. But for that short time that it's not, we're letting students carry backpacks. And a part of letting students carry backpacks is a commitment to awareness that we need to have. Around making sure students don't bring inappropriate things to school. Steve and I did just talk to restorative services about bringing a restorative justice supervisor into each building to increase their availability to talk with students. We know through, through research that the best prevention or the best tool. To preventing students bringing something in that's inappropriate is awareness. That, that having okay to say is a phone number where students and staff can make anonymous statements. But our staff and guidance counselors just keep being aware if a student is struggling mentally, if, if there's any red flags. So I, I know that it's not been our past practice to allow students to have backpacks. We are adjusting, increasing staff awareness so that people feel safe during that era. Any questions on, that was a lot of stuff. Any questions on any of those things?
Jessica, you know, as far as the community volunteering to come out and help, you know, in, in this era. Is it, are, are you looking for that or is it, you know, thanks, but you know, given this pandemic, we prefer. You know, less traffic in the building than more.
That's a great question. I'm, I'm sure Dr. Quinlan or Mr. Truice there could talk more about like the number of humans that we can have in the building. And I, I know there is also board policy as far as fingerprinting and processing to bring people into the buildings. But mostly we've taken the stance of all hands on deck. Like if we, we still need some long-term subs, we still need some student supervisors. We, I mean, we have positions still open. And then as far as volunteers, we can always use volunteers outside during before school, after school recess. Like those outdoors activities, but as far as the specifics on that, HR probably be able to speak better than I can. Any other question? All right, and that takes us to our typical recommendation slide. Where we are just reiterating what Dr. Vornik said earlier. Recommending a shift to optional in-person instruction with remote still being available, starting March 15th. We do have factors that have played into that March 15th recommendation. I know it seems really far away, but you know, it goes fast. We are interested in ensuring that our staff can be vaccinated. We see the health data trending and want to see it continue in the direction towards our aims. We do want to maintain our defined daily schedule. We kind of talked earlier about the idea of cohorting. It's kind of a last resort for us. We'd really like to maintain the four days if possible. While maintaining current rosters in the classroom and continuing to social distances as much as possible. So all of those things kind of played into all those puzzle pieces into that March 15th decision. Any questions on that? All right.
Thank you, Ms. Tyre. Thank you, Mr. Netzel. Again, as part of our return to learn. Program, we do have an element of public comment and it is only directed toward the return to learn. So with that, we'll open up public comments and for anybody who would like to speak with the board. Regarding our return to learn, learn program, this is the time that you may do so. There is a five-minute time limitation for each speaker. And keep in mind, this is not a dialogue between yourself and the board. And we ask that you not use any employee names nor student names. And if you would, state your name for the record. So when you're ready, Ms. Pearl.
Ellie Huck Harrison.
Hi there. Yes, this is Ellie Huck Harrison. I openly admit I'm not a numbers person, even though I'm a nurse and have to do certain things with numbers. But the confusion I have is the attendance data points. For not only the elementaries through fifth and sixth, but right on through seventh through 12. Those numbers where you go Elliott, 95, 95, 95, 95, average 95. Is that, there's obviously more than 95 students in Elliott. It must be a percentage, but nowhere on this data sheet does it say that it's a percentage. Or that it is the number of students. So to me, that's very confusing. And right on up through high school, where you have the different weeks and the attendance for the different weeks. It doesn't have. A percentage sign on that one either. So that's very confusing to me. It seems like it should have a percentage or some kind of a disclaimer of what kind of information you're exactly telling us. And then I have. I wouldn't really call it a poem. I have a writing from someone. It's an anonymous writing. That I'd like to read to you folks. At the entrance gate of a university. The following message was posted for contemplation. Quote. Destroying any nation does not require the use of atomic bombs. Or the use of long-range missiles. It only requires lowering the quality of education. And allowing cheating in the examinations by students. End quote. Now, I do not think that Holt allows that. I do not think they allowed that before. The pandemic and kids in classrooms and all of that kind of stuff. But it certainly is something to think about, that are we lowering the quality of education? By not having these kids in class, face to face. Because of all the other things that go on with class and with kids. And like you say, leaving on the masks and the, they can't, they can come back, but they can't hug and they can't this and they can't that. I, I can't imagine a kindergarten class that is not a hugging class or a kindergarten teacher that is not a hugger. Because I can remember Mr. Dr. Hornak, when you were a kindergarten teacher. And I can remember coming into Horizon and you were, you still are such a tall man and towering over those little. Five-year-olds and you were hugging them. I know you were hugging them and obviously. And obviously, most of them have gone on and graduated by now. But I can't imagine that. So I don't know how you're going to ever do that. My suggestion is, and I've heard of this from a friend of mine's daughter who has kids in the Jackson School. What they did was, once they got all their numbers in, they took the classroom and if it was 22 kids or 25 kids, well, it'd be 24 kids because you can't split a kid. Make half the classroom come, whether they come Monday, Tuesday, and the other half come Thursday, Friday, or whether you go Monday, Thursday, and then Tuesday, Friday, and have Wednesday be the catch-up day. Basically, split the classroom in half. Those of you that have walked around the buildings and are concerned about the spacing and the number of desks and the number of that. So split the classroom in half and only have half come on certain days. Then you've kind of solved your your spacing problem and your volume of kids. You'd still have to have the Zoom and the the classroom teaching on the Chromebooks that you're having, which I'm so glad I'm not a teacher because I wouldn't want that headache. But I appreciate you, Jessica. I appreciate you, Steve. I appreciate all the board. I appreciate Christine Lopez. You are doing golden. I just, I knew that the minute I put that out there on Facebook that you would come through with the the Zoom link. So yeah, I don't know what's going on as far as what you guys are going to end up with. But the last part of this paper that I'm reading from says the collapse of education is leads to the collapse of a nation. Now, I don't think we're going to go that far with this, but it's certainly something to think about with the way the education and all these kids that want so bad to be back in the classroom. Thank you so much. And you're doing a good job.
Thank you, Sally.
Alan Ingram.
Can we hear me okay?
We can.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. However, I will admit, I find the premise of public comment at these school board meetings an entirely pointless exercise. I've listened to these board meetings for the last several months, and I've heard parents, teachers, and students discuss all sides of the return to face-to-face learning. As an observer, there is one side, one, that is being considered. I fully understand and appreciate that remote learning is the best option for some families. I've been happy to hear of the successes that so many families are having with this. I'm also happy that those families who are immunocompromised or have health concerns have the options to remain with the e-learning option once face-to-face resumes. Those families should be able to obtain vaccines and take the precautions needed to keep their family safe. However, you have blatantly ignored the pleas, the cries for help, and the desperation of the families who need our children to return to in-person learning. Whether due to social or emotional struggles that our children face, we have a kindergartner in weekly therapy due to her anxiety issues with being isolated, or the academic failures that so many of our students are facing, or the parents who cannot return to work because they're supporting their children at home, you have heard countless accounts of the need of a sizable portion of our community. And yet you continue to ignore them. You falsely state that you continue to take the health and safety of all stakeholders into account while making these decisions. With due respect, please stop with the lies. You're listening to the stakeholders you want to listen to. To hear today that you are again considering pushing back a start to in-person learning further confirms this. You have had nearly 12 months to figure this out and yet continue to delay, 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 and instead to continue to follow a set of guidelines that frankly today are outdated, using them as an excuse to avoid even offering this option. I would like to know how the administrators and stakeholders in Holt, no more than the state government officials who have said children need to return to school, no more than the federal government who have said children need to return to school, and no more than the CDC, which has shown that COVID is not spreading widely in K-12 settings. I would like to hear from that individual directly on this meeting, how they know better than the national experts. We are new to the district this year, and frankly, if we had to do it all over again, never would have moved to Holt. This district has been a complete and utter failure for our family, with the exception of one person. She's listening to this meeting tonight, and she knows who she is. Frankly, if not for her, we would have yanked our children out of this district months ago for one that is willing to think outside of the box and find a safe way to provide an in-person option. We have fought and fought for our two girls to have the resources they need in school. We literally have resorted to yelling to get results. With our experience, no one in this district listens. No one in the district communicates. I've sent emails to support staff and even a building principal outlining concerns. Neither gave me the common decency of a response. We are still, five months into the school year, waiting on a finalized IEP for our one daughter. It has been excuse after excuse about why it hasn't been done. Frankly, we're done with the excuses. The time for talk has passed. It's time for results. We, as parents, are figuring out what she needs on our own. While you may be succeeding for some families, you have proved useless as a district when it comes to supporting ours. I can't hope but wonder, if there's a desire to get teachers vaccinated before returning to in-person learning, are we confident that each and every teacher who is concerned about returning face-to-face has not left their homes since March of last year? They don't go to Target, Kroger, the mall, or any other public place? They haven't come in contact with any other person? How many of these people have gone on vacation, gone to eat in restaurants, gone out in public at all? I understand there are some who want to be safe in the workplace. However, literally every other field has asked their employees to go outside of their comfort zone with precautions in place, the same precautions, I may add, that our district has said we will have in place. Cashiers in retail stores have worked throughout this pandemic without a vaccine. Healthcare workers worked for months without a vaccine. To expect that all of our staff in Holt Public will get a vaccine is closed-minded. I do not, however, come to this meeting without a solution for a suggestion. If there are staff that don't want to return until they get a vaccine, let's try something different. Let's have them teach virtually to students who want to stay remote. Then let's have the teachers who are comfortable being in-person teach our in-person students. This may be a change of routine or or comfort for some of our students now. But frankly, what haven't our kids already adapted to this year? Nothing has been normal. The solution would literally help solve both concerns and actually allow the district to serve all students, not just some. In conclusion, I wish the district would just be honest. Let's just admit that this board has no intention of returning to in-person this year. Stop teasing us, be honest, actually be transparent, and don't just say that you are. At least then we'll know what your true intentions are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Megan McKinney.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Megan McKinney, and I'm a senior at the high school. First and foremost, I would also like to thank our teachers across the district. Our teachers are amazing people and they deserve all the rec- To be perfectly honest, it has been a hard year as a senior. This is not how I imagined my year going. Person, but not at the expense of the safety of the students or faculty. Opportunity to choose which form of learning is best for them. Seems as though every me, and I am thankful for this. However, we need to make sure we are also looking out for our teachers and other staff. I believe we should refrain from going back to school. Once again, I would like to thank all the board members and all of our teachers for helping at times. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKinney.
Debbie Cruz.
Go ahead, Ms. Cruz. You're on to it, though.
Okay, her hand is down now. And I see no others.
All right. With that, we'll close public comment. Board members, I would ask for motion.
I will move that we start, I mean, so we, that's somewhat of my, what am I trying to move here? I'm trying to move that we go with the plan of starting in-person instruction on March 15. As described in our report on the continuing to learn.
At first?
I'll second.
I'll second. Any discussion? Then, Ms. Bureau, could you do a roll call vote?
Can I just ask one question, please? Because I'm still confused by this. So we're saying the return on March 15. But if teachers are not vaccinated by then, what happens? If we can't, if if density is too high to have what the state requires, which is a minimum seated distance of three feet in classrooms, then what happens? I I understand that we're calling for a vote of a return on March 15. But what I'm wondering is, if we can't follow what the state requires, then then how will we proceed?
I was going to ask Dr. Hornak.
Yeah. What I'm looking at says maintain the defined daily schedule, maintain current rosters. Like, we can't, it it has everything. And what I'm saying is, if we can't do everything because of the numbers on March 15, then what?
One option would be to consider the cohort model to reduce the density. Another would be to ensure, you know, it's very possible that I need to step into the classroom to continue to cut the the density down, the number of students. So we're swirling around those things until we actually get the number of kids coming back. It is a bit situational, but that's a wonderful question.
Well, I, so I guess I, when I look at the instructional environment recommendation here, it lists several things. So I guess what I want to know is exactly what are we voting on? Are we voting on the 15th? But we're saying maybe the daily schedule won't be what we've defined. Maybe we won't have current rosters. Maybe we won't have social distancing. I'm just wondering where the hard lines are. Because I I just don't want to vote that we're going to accomplish all of these things when these numbers are looking like perhaps we cannot accomplish all of these things. So if if the hard vote is on the 15th, then I think we have to say then that the notion of the defined daily schedule and maintaining current rosters is not a hard line.
I'd be willing to accept that.
Am I misunderstanding something?
No, I don't think you are. I I think there's a lot of things that are in play. And I think that to coalesce around getting parents a date that we would return, I I think everybody's probably in agreement, there's some things that we may have to give up as a result of that. There may be some things that need to be changed as a result of that.
That would be my philosophy as well. I think that giving that, giving people a date, and you know, even though it is it's pretty far in the future, it's the best date we can do. And we just need to, we'll need to adapt around the date rather than adapt the date around the around the protocols.
Yeah, I I think the other thing is, is that we haven't really recognized the power of the innovation of teachers and staff once we do get back. A lot of times, they provide the answers to things that we try to answer before we actually get there.
So that there there are, are we, do we need to vote to do away with the metrics then? Or was that just on a month-by-month basis, using the metrics?
The metrics continue. So we are hoping to honor the metrics as well as work to that March 15 date. I know it may seem like, how can you do both? We don't have a crystal ball, we're not able to look into the future. But we, we would love to honor the metric. We would love to have a date so our families can start planning. And we're hopeful, based on the trends, that that will take place.
Okay, so so what are we voting on then? We're voting on the 15th, but if the metrics don't line up with the 15th, then what? I'm just, I'm sorry, but I really want clarity around what what we're asking for because I I just don't understand how we can have all of these hard stakes in the ground. If we're going to not use the metrics, then let's vote on not using the metrics. If we are going to use the metrics, then I'm confused how we can have a firm date if we don't know where the metrics will be. I I'm just trying to understand what exactly is this vote?
My intent with the motion was to set a date. So and with the assumption that we would adapt as necessary, adapt the protocols as necessary. That was what I was intending with the March 15 date.
Okay, so what?
So we can, we can have a separate motion perhaps to to indicate what protocols we're willing to to waive to hit that date.
So the slide says the instructional environment recommendation, but we're not voting on that full recommendation. We're just voting on the portion of the recommendation that says the date of the 15th.
Unless the state says we can't do it.
And if staff has not had an opportunity to be vaccinated by then, will we still stand by the 15th?
I think that's part of our letter of agreement with those bargaining units.
Yeah, we can set a date, but if they're not vaccinated, I mean, we're running into, you know, Chicago tried this a few weeks ago. The school board said, you're going back, and the teacher said, no, we're not. And in that case, the teachers tend to win because we need teachers in the classroom, right? So if if they aren't vaccinated, I think we have a separate problem with with the HGA.
Well, I'm just trying to provide clarity for everyone who's listening to understand because if we if we don't have intentions of going back on the 15th, if teachers aren't vaccinated, then I think we should say that. I don't, I know we've been accused of not being transparent. I'm trying to be extremely transparent. I think there's a lot of vague language here, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page what we're talking about. So if if, let's say, those vaccines don't come through, I have no idea if they will or they won't. But we voted to return on the 15th. If that's the vote and we voted on that, then are we saying that we're willing to return regardless of whether or not staff has been vaccinated?
Trustee Dalton, some of that is, as President Perry mentioned, a part of the negotiations we're working on. In terms of the motion, we are looking for that that, you know, date of March 15 with the factors playing into that being that all teachers have the opportunity to be vaccinated. We are collecting data on that right now, that the health data continues to improve. I mean, it it it's moving in the right direction. And then those other things you have listed. But some of these things are are items that we are currently in negotiations on.
Well, is it appropriate for us to vote on it then, if it's still being negotiated?
Well, we need, every month, we need to reconfirm the ECOOL. So if you, if someone would like to change their recommendation and do a different proposal for the group, we would get behind that. We would need to come back at some point and call you back in.
I was frustrated by the vaccination thing as anyone is, trust me. I am seething at the, you know, chomping at the bit here. I'm wondering why we haven't gotten our vaccines, but I, I, it has to be getting better. You know, there's more doses out there. The Health Department really is trying to get this done. I'm pretty confident we're going to have vaccinations in time. But again, if we don't, I'm a lot, you know, I want all, anyone who wants to be vaccinated, who's working with the kids should be able to get vaccinated, right? So I see, I fully, I believe what you're saying there, Amy. I, I think, you know, we're running, we're running a risk if we say we're going to start on the 15th that we can't meet all of our expectations. But on the converse side, we have to set a date so that people can plan.
And if we can't meet any of, you know, what the critical items are, we would have to move towards that cohort model, at least for a few weeks until we can get this done.
Right. So if we set a date and we say we're gonna hit, we're gonna meet our metrics some way or another, right? If we have to go to cohorts, we go to cohorts. If we have to, you know, whatever the magic thing is that we have to do to meet our metrics, that's what we do, right? So.
There's gonna be adjustments. There's no, there's no question about, you know, we can't plan out every single item that's gonna occur and not occur.
Okay, I just want to make sure that parents understand because there's a big difference between attending school two days a week and four days a week. So if that is potentially going to be an option, then I think we need to state all of that. The state is very clear in their most recent guidelines that the students must maintain a minimum seated distance of three feet in classrooms. They're very clear on that.
And I think we, I think we can do that based on the numbers that we're getting back about how many people want to come back. And the rooms that I looked at, I think three feet is doable. The six feet is not, I don't think doable. Three feet is doable. So I'm, I'm pretty confident in the facilities for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Bureau, if we can use a roll call?
Dr. Helgen?
Yes.
Dr. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Bureau, yes. Ms. Robel?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. We'll move to the Michael Smith Memorial Stadium naming. Four members during our committee of the whole, you heard from Coach Falk on his request on behalf of the family and others to name our football stadium after former coach Michael Smith. So I would entertain a motion if we would.
We discussed suspending a policy.
I was gonna say, I first would like to make a motion to suspend policy number 7250 to so we will not have the five-year stipulation.
Meaning that the naming will be indefinite.
Would be a permanent and indefinite naming of the stadium.
So I would entertain a motion to suspend policy 7250.
Julie made the motion, right?
I did.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. It's getting late.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Ms. Bureau, if we could do a roll call?
Dalton?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Robel?
Yes.
Dr. Leonard?
Yes.
Dr. Helgen?
Yes.
Ms. Bureau, yes. And Mr. Perry?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes.
I'd like to make the motion to permanently name the Hope Public School Football Stadium the Michael Smith Memorial Stadium.
At first?
I second.
I have a second. Any discussion? I just want to state that it is a great honor to have the stadium named after Michael Smith. And thanks for all that, you know, brought forth the effort. Ms. Bureau, if we could do a roll call?
Ms. Bureau, yes. Dr. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Helgen?
Yes.
And Robel?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
And Mr. Perry?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. We'll move to HR. Dr. Quinlan?
Good evening. Peter and I are both here. If you have any questions about the HR report, and then I think we had a few where we needed to do the resolution, naming the trustee for the Wim-Hip pool.
So I'll take those one at a time. Does anybody have any questions on the HR report? If not, Dr. Quinlan, can you tell us what we need to vote on here as far as naming you and, I believe, Mike?
Not really sure. Do I have to read something or do I? It basically, Wim-Hip contacted us and said that we needed to name two trustees to the, it's the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool. It will be myself and Michael Dunkle as the new trustees to the pool for, to represent Hope Public Schools. I'm not sure if I actually have to say something or if that's enough.
Yeah, that's enough. I mean, is there anything else we should know about it?
I don't think so. We signed a conflict of interest waiver and we will learn more about it as we get going here.
So you, you're on there until such time as you're removed?
Yes, yes. Or we determined, or the board determines other trustees for the pool. It's, we've been with Wim-Hip for about a year now, I believe. And we just need, we were contacted on Thursday that we needed to re-affirm or confirm this. And then we will add it. Christine has it added to the July meeting moving forward. So we make sure we're on track with everything else.
Okay.
Mr. Perry, Wim-Hip is a self-insurance pool. And all of the members have trustee representative on the board. In the past couple of years, it has been Kim Cosgrove and a couple of alternatives, which were the HR specialists in human resources, at least since last July, because there was no HR director at the time. And looking over the request to renew the trustee, it was recommended that the HR director be the secondary trustee and that Mike, as the financial person, be the primary trustee on behalf of Holt, participating in the quarterly or annual meetings of the board of Wim-Hip.
And if I'm noticing, that's not correct on the actual form. If, and we can, Christine can change that before this goes to Wim-Hip. If you notice that, I think I'm listed first.
Yeah, you are.
So we can switch that if that's, if you're able to do that and just switch the.
Yeah, I believe Mike should be the primary trustee because much of this has to do with rate setting and finances of the Wim-Hip organization. So that makes some sense.
Definitely.
Andy's the new guy.
Yep.
So Board, I'd ask for a resolution naming Michael as the trustee and then Dr. Quinlan as the alternative.
I will move that we confirm Michael Dunkle as the trustee and Erin Quinlan as the alternate trustee for the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool.
At first?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Ms. Bureau, if we could do a roll call?
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Robel?
Yes.
Dr. Helgen?
Yes.
Dr. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Ms. Bureau, yes. And Mr. Perry?
Yes. All right, then I think we had one more item there that we need to talk about with transportation.
Yes, we have negotiated with the Transportation Union and about recalling the drivers who have been on furlough since last August. The modifications to the master agreement include allowing us to hire people before recall people so that we could fully staff the transportation department, increasing their guaranteed weekly hours from 20 to 25 hours through the balance to the school year. And some adjustment if they took jobs in other departments of the Hope Public Schools while maintaining their bus routes. So they could do a lunch, lunch supervisor or building supervisor between their bus routes and they would get paid the regular bus route salary as opposed to what they would have gotten, gotten working for EDGES staff. So the request is the board, we also included the extension of some uncharged sick leave up to 10 days for quarantines as a result of COVID. So the request is the board move and approve the adoption of the furlough recall letter of agreement with local 243 of the Teamsters and the transportationists members with the Hope Public School. And that was really awkwardly worded. But I sent you a draft motion that I believe is in your packet. It has been a long meeting.
President Perry, are you ready for our motion?
I certainly am.
Okay, I pulled it up. So I make the motion to approve furlough, the furlough recall letter of agreement between Hope Public Schools and Teamster Local Number 243, covering providing for modifications to the master agreement between the parties and effective from this date through June 30th, 2021.
At first?
I'll second.
And I have a second. Any discussion? Just thanks Pete, Dr. Quinlan, and also thank you to our bus drivers and, you know, working with us in this period of time.
Thank you.
Ms. Bureau, if you do a roll call?
Ms. Robel?
Yes.
Dr. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bureau, yes. Dr. Helgen?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
And Mr. Perry?
Yes. Right, is that it in the HR world?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move next to financial matters in this Caspro.
Good evening. I just feel so sorry. It's been a long night and usually it gets long when we do a budget update. So I feel like if I was at professional development, they would have you all stand up and do jumping jacks or, you know, move your legs around or something. So I am going to start to share my screen. And hopefully, are you able to see the proposed budget update number one? Thank you very much. All right. There, since the last time we have been and reviewed the budget, as you remember, we had to come together in June. So the state of Michigan does have a law that we, as a public school district, like all public school districts in Michigan, are required to adopt a budget and before their year starts. So before July 1st, we had to adopt a budget. And our, the state of Michigan did not have a budget adopted for us. And so we had to take the best information that we had. Your first four slides are slides that we saw in June of, I mean, they're of June of 2020. And at that point in time, in May, the Revenue Consensus Conference, which would be the both branches and the administration portion had come together on the school aid fund and determined that there was a $1.1 billion gap in the school aid. And at that point, it would have equated to about a $650 cut per pupil. And we adopted our budget on that information that they had. And in that, in knowing that we were going to reduce students, we knew that we were going to lose students all already. And we were going to have a foundation cut of 660. We assumed that because that's what the total budget for the state aid was. We had started to prepare budget cuts. And at that point in time, we had cut $2 million. $2 million did not take care of reducing 250 students and cutting a student foundation of 660. But we knew that we were going to have to do some sort of cut while we waited for the state of Michigan to decide how they were going to take care of the budget hole and what that cut would be. You also saw this Excel spreadsheet that you have. And what we were trying to do, based on what we knew from the state of Michigan, was to acknowledge in our last budget update that we were doing for 1920 that most likely the state of Michigan was going to cut us $660. And then we were trying to acknowledge that we were going to lose 250 in this school year of students. And so we took those two amounts and we came up with our first original budget for this 2021 school year. And to make it a balanced budget where your revenues and expenses could, well, your revenues were greater than your expenses, but acknowledge what you had to keep to keep your fund balance. We worked with MDE and the Treasury to announce there was a fund balance use and reductions to balance. So we had said, until we know what that exact number is from the state of Michigan, until we know what our COVID relief package is, we are going to hold that and prepare for more. We'd already cut 2 million, but this was another 3.7 million. And our last slide that we had in June was this. We were going to create the Hope Citizens Committee, of which Dr. Hornak has, has been meeting. of which Dr. Hornak has has been meeting with them. They have been great stakeholders. They have looked at financial data that we have. We prepared for reductions, all of the things that are on this slide. This is the last slide that you saw in June, and actually, it is kind of, some of these items we're still waiting on. And so I, we start there and I show you all those four slides because truly you gotta know where we started because the numbers that changed, the number of COVID relief, the number of what state aid was given to us changed immensely. And there are many numbers that go one way and then they'll they'll increase because there's new revenues, but then there are decreases also. And so we need to go back to where we started with in June. One of the items that we do have and we can count at Holt is our actual enrollment counts. We knew at this point, I just to set this up for anybody who hasn't seen it before, all of these numbers on the top of this Excel spreadsheet are the actual numbers of students within the grades. And what this Excel spreadsheet is trying to do is project for the future what our student enrollment will be. And what it does is it takes these retention rates and it says how many students were in kindergarten and went to first grade? How many in first grade went to second and second and third and third and fourth? And over time, you get a pretty good prediction. And we saw these numbers in June, but this last blue line here is the actual that has come out of pupil accounting. And one of the items that you should know is 383 in total, and this would be heads, okay? Not FTE, but heads. And of that component, 263 are whole public schools and 120 are that shared time. This ST is shared time students. Those are, and so all of these are heads, shared time students are FTE. That's the best we can equate to them because you just take slices of those shared time students off. And so what I really wanted to note was although there's 383, we're looking at 263. It's already been reported by curriculum and Holly Scott. And this line here, this last one was their projection. So Holly Scott with her pupil accounting, she had, she knew the number of releases. She had rolled the cohorts up. She knew how many enrollments she had. And at that point in time, she did have 263. And so we now, we have some good data on that. We always have Holly. We have the enrollment chart and we also this year, in preparation of going to the bond, it is a requirement that you have an outside firm that will look at the projections of births that you have. And we had middle cities and we paid them and they have some future projections that we can work on for the upcoming years to that. So with setting that stage, where we were, there's the number of students. This is a 10,000 foot view. This is like the big, the big, what is really going on in the budget. So you can kind of get your mind and then you'll see it flow as we go through the detail of the budget. And I have to say, the majority of the time, there's maybe six numbers on the sheet and maybe there's two really big ones. And this year, unfortunately, there's a lot going on. So the original budget that we have was 68,000. And in doing that, we also know every year we have carryover items. And there were really only two that we had this year, curriculum carried over funds, and they always build for those larger purchases. And our buildings did that, too. Our buildings were larger. We looked at that and when we closed our, the audit in August, what those numbers all were. And then there is that $3.7 million. We have to recognize that in. So we've had a placeholder in our budget, but now we're going to recognize that we're releasing that placeholder and letting all of the actual funds, whether it be grants or new state aid money, come in. The item that I have here, this is new revenue, state aid unrestricted. They did some specific things called the super blend because all schools in Michigan, almost all of them lost students and lost big numbers. And so they did not, they modified the calculation to count the kids for all students, all school districts in the state of Michigan. So I highlight that because it looks like 4.8 million. But please remember, you had to overcome the 3.7 that was sitting there in your budget before you can start the new money to balance your budget. We have to acknowledge that we are not having gate receipts, our pay to participate. Our childcare revenues are down and our early childhood center. Community education is one of the supplemental sheets in the back of your package and you can look at that in detail. That would be lost revenues, but we also received new revenues, quite a lot from the ISD. And that is based on their headly rollback was approved last year, so that is rolling through. And also the number of students that we have and the programs that they are in. A lot, whoops, sorry about that. A lot of the money that we received, $3.8 million were grants. I have two, actually, out of that 3 point million. I have the detail of the COVID grants are in the back of your supplemental. You have Esser Money, the Equity Education Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund. That is $580,000. That's managed right now by Steve Netzel and you have to apply for that. Everything is approved. You can change that grant as much as you want, but you do have to ask for a reimbursement. Another grant that we got was $1.9 million. That was the coronavirus relief funds. Those were designated, those funds actually came to the state of Michigan before June 30th. They were assigned to us. There were some expenditures that happened in June. The Chromebooks came before June 30th. But the state of Michigan did not allocate those funds until after the school year had ended in July and August. And so there are accounting gymnastics because of that. Because the federal government said you can't place revenue in a year that you've already closed up. And so that that you will see for probably the first time that I've ever been doing this, your your grant revenues in do not equal your grant revenues out. So there's some differences there. There are also differences because there are some operational expenses in those grants because they met the grant. And one of them is would you lay off people? And we had, we, we could have laid off bus drivers, all of them, but some of them stayed because they're doing the food service bus or security because they are distributing. And so there are movement between operational and grant funds, too. So as you can see, there's big changes that are going on at all levels. This is familiar to you. At the top half, this is what your Board of Education report looks like. Every month you have your local, state, federal sources, and there are the changes between the original budget and your proposed amendment. But unless you know what the detail of each one of those means, they don't really mean a lot. And so as you can see down here, local revenue, you have the components of the decrease that is up here in local. In the state of Michigan, there is a total increase in the state foundation and the state sources of 5.5 million, but there are components to that. And then in the federal grants, you can see all of the federal grants. Heather has done childcare federal grants to help support that program. The Esser funds that I talked about, the state of Michigan also gave $19 per student coronavirus or COVID-19 grant. And then you also have some grants, our Title Ones, Title Two, just the regular grant increases because of carryovers from prior year. And there you can see the half a million dollars that was the total increase in the allocations from the ISD. I'm not sure. Do you have any questions before I go on? Specific?
Kim, we started with a lot of unknowns. And at this point, as we move toward June 30th, is there anything out there that, you know, could bite us, if you will, that, you know, that might change in a, in a material way? It just seems really ironic that we started with so many unknowns that now pretty, it looks like we got everything pretty much buttoned up.
So in the January, I, I thought that the largest unknown that we had was what was going to really happen to the state aid fund, right, during this year? So they had hoped that the growth or what they were seeing in there. And then they had their January Revenue Consensus Conference. And the stated fund is even more robust than they thought. And so that, for me, gives the security that I don't think we will have a surprise at the May Revenue Consensus Conference. So I think that you are correct in saying that I don't see any surprises coming around the corner for this school year. It's a good question. On the expenditure side of that, this would be the lower half of your monthly responsibility reports that you see in the board reports. So there is the original budget and there is the proposed new updated budget. As you can see, there are $8 million of increased cost there. And so I tried to note some of the larger things that are here and what is affecting those. But really, the true story comes to the, to the bottom. So there is that 8,420. So as you can see in above, the increase of, from the original budget to the proposed budget is 8,42,000. And then we come and say, what is that really made up of? And that, out of that 8 million, there's 3.5 of it is all grant money, okay? And actually, even in the salary and benefits, I know you've heard me talk about the 147C before. That is a retirement pass through where the state of Michigan gives us retirement money and we pass it right back through. $700,000 increase this year that is coming. And so there are really large numbers even embedded in there. As you can see, we brought close to $1 million worth of new Chromebooks. And the Curriculum Department and Technology is organizing to have one more round of Chromebooks purchased. And so when the students come back to school, but not only that, charging stations and cases that they are working on, too. There's your desk shields and Plexiglas. I know that the high school is also working on Plexiglas for having others so the kids don't have to carry them. They are just in the classroom, so we probably will have to buy some more. And then there's just the contracted service and grants and the supplies that are there. The next number that I would really talk about are the individual items that are coming in the department. And some of these items are put back from your original cuts. You do have facilities. There is increases in there. And the detail of what they're expected to spend is in the back in those supplemental schedules. We have added edge of staff to make sure that there is enough money for all of the extra help and the extra hands that are going to be there in the elementary and in the middle school. There are the wrestling mats that you have approved, the school foundations for the students and the carryover amounts that were there, too. And so I only, I can, you can ask any question that you have. I really don't have anything extra there. And my next slide will be to ask you for the approval of the budget. I know I'm going fast and trying, there is so much money being moved because of the grants. If there are not any questions, I would ask from the original budget to the proposed first amended budget. If you could please pass that. In the original budget, there was a revenue greater than expenses of $68,000, but it also had that holding of 3.7 because we did not know what the funding of the state of Michigan was. Now that we are set, we've had our January Revenue Consensus Conference. We have had our update from the Ingham Intermediate School District, of which sometimes is quite large. We have that budget and we are now looking at revenues greater than expenditures of $696,292,000.
And the next time we would update the budget would be June?
I would, most of the time, we try to do it in May, but because of this one, I would, and when we come back to school, how many resources we would be, we would do it in June of this year, yes.
I'd make a motion that we accept the proposed first amended budget for the 2021 school year.
Support.
First and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to say, it became apparent during the, we had a subcommittee meeting, a finance committee meeting, that Kim's team, I have no idea how you managed to survive the last year with all the work that you've been doing. It's, it's crazy with, with the huge cuts that we were anticipating versus the, the changes. Just, just a remarkable job of just keeping the ship up and, and the, the books working. I'm, I'm just really impressed by all that, that work. It was a, that was, that was chaos. And you managed to get through it, so congratulations.
I appreciate that. I think that we say that to everybody, if you've ever, you know, curriculum and what they're doing and food service, holy smokes, and what they're doing. So everybody has been doing a yeoman's job. Thanks.
Yeah, we were talking about going for a fund balance of 10% down to like 5%, and now we're up to 12%. It's just crazy numbers.
Right. Um, the last slide that I want is, and this one is looking at a really broad overview.
We haven't voted yet.
Okay, okay, I'll let you go.
Ms. Bureau, if you could do a roll call.
Dr. Leonard?
Yes.
Dr. Helgren?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Robel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bureau is, yes, Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
This is the last slide that I will show you with the budget update. And what it is trying to accomplish in a very broad overview is what will happen when the super blend calculation goes away from the state of Michigan? And what happens if all the COVID money went away? Would we be, still be able to sustain our operating budget? Or would we immediately have a deficit? And so what you see are the last two years' actuals, and we've seen this sheet. It, it just tries to separate all of the state revenues out and then all other, and then all salary benefits, contracted staff and like edge of staff and high tech. It puts them all in the group together and then all other expenditures. There was our original budget and then this is our updated budget that you just approved. Now, in a real broad, hmm, I don't know, real broad look at it, this is the difference, this 1.8 million of removing the super blend calculation of how the state of Michigan pays us. So if the state of Michigan had not paid a super blend to all of them, which really it's homogenizing your counts and making that, we lost, how many did I say? 383 students, but in the super blend. 383 students. But in the super blend calculation, we only lost 90, okay? So what they're trying to do is really leverage your past with what you're sitting with right now. Once we go back to a regular calculation of students under the state of Michigan, we will immediately lose $1.8 million. So that's how the state has buoyed all of the school districts up this year. That's our portion. So I take that away for, for our next year. And I take away the COVID grants here. And then I only took away a portion of the COVID grants because some of our operations that we have and some of the expenses that we have do not go away. So I just took a portion of those away. I kept salary and benefits exactly the same. I was focusing on the large items. And at that point in time, once I did that, we really only, the operational deficit is really only 74, which, 74,000, which is a manageable number. And then you can start to look at what's going to happen with the salary and benefits. You know, we do have retirements that have, that have put in their letter. We do have a few resignations. And so we'll have to manage that. But it's not a $4 million loss next year. So I think that we should feel, you know, Mr. Perry, you had asked, do we have anything we need to look at? I will certainly be monitoring this. I know that we always have estimates that are not spent, right? All the way. We always, we, well, actually, you can't spend it all or over it. You would be in violation of state law. But we will have some gas and utilities that aren't all spent. I'll have some of the budget for finance that won't be all spent. Curriculum and the buildings won't spend all of their money. So we know that this, this number will most likely get larger and will help to buffer and offset the loss of the revenues that we have next year. And that's all I have. The rest of the file, the rest of the slides that you have are just support documents for your review.
In a speculative, you kept the FTEs the, the same as what 2021 was, the, the loss number?
Yep. So I didn't add one student or take one away. That's right. Which I think is pretty conservative because I believe that we'll have a ton of kindergarteners like next year, you know, so.
Yeah, that's probably the biggest what if in 2022 is what our student enrollment number looks like. And, you know, that's going to be based upon what, you know, this virus actually does and so on and so forth, so.
Yep. That's all I had, unless you had some questions.
All right, we'll move to the calendar section. And Dr. Hornak, there's some items there that you want to point out to us?
I would love to. Thank you. Just a reminder, Friday and Monday are off due to midwinter break. We will resume school on the 16th. We're back together on March 8th, which is exactly a month from now. And then that week, we have parent teacher conferences. We roll into spring break. But it's important for me to share, in April, our board meeting does not fall on the second Monday. It actually falls on the third because of the week off. That allows us a week to prepare a board packet for you. So please, just a reminder, April 19th is the April board meeting.